Please join, stand us, help stand and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. All right, we'll jump in and I'll take this off here. As usual, we have a window of opportunity here getting started that will allow anybody to bring anything before the board that's a question or comments, no action taken, but we do have a window of opportunity here if somebody gets something they want to bring up.
I do commission somebody else here.
Okay.
I met with a tree commissioner commission yesterday, Mary Beth Coleman and a few other people had things they want to do down Pigeon Roost and primarily it was the fence around there. It's been hit by a tree and different things and they had John Collins down there and there's some different people that's what they could do and there's some different things. There's also a stump there which will sound kind of odd, but they want to preserve the stump of a tree that was there from ancient times. Okay. There's some other little work done, but I told them before they altered anything, which would basically be the fence, it would have to go before this board just because the county owns that thing now. There's all kinds of stuff we're dreaming about, but they asked for $6,000 from the Visitors' Commission, which they won't approve or disapprove, I think, till their January meeting, which is January 5th. And we'll have another meeting, I think, this month if you guys want to get with everybody and look at a little more inside what they're talking about, but they want to basically take that fences around it and take, basically cut it in half. They want to, this was John Collins' idea, they want to preserve the graveside area, which is right beside the monument and take, because the fencing area is, John felt like he just couldn't save it all of this. Been there, so well, I don't remember how long it's been there, it's been there for as I can remember, but they want to take the good parts and fence in the part around the grave area, which is kind of sinking there too, by the way. So, we'll go over and order with the next meeting, I don't care, but that's kind of what they're looking at. You guys are more than welcome to call them and check it out even further. Like I said, there are a dozen more things here we're all thinking possibilities of, but at the moment it was the fence and the stump and I think there was something else and they were asking for money to pay. They weren't asking for any money from the county, just asking permission to do the work around the fence.
But the fence that you're talking about is not the boundary fence, but actually the fence around the monument?
The monument and the grave area right there beside it, yeah. And it's been hit by trees, it's kind of rough. John just didn't feel like it was worth saving and the cost to replace it or fix it would have been a lot more, so I think they're asking for $6,000 from the Visitors' Commission, but that's to do that, preserve the stump there. You'll have to see it, there's an old stump there, it's like a direct descendant of the tree was there when they, that's history. But Mary Beth has kind of led the charge on it and there's another lady Nancy Henfield who is also working on putting it on the National Register of Historic Places, which will open us up to grants to do some things with. So, I mean, I can go over all these things, we're just dreaming about it, it's just a dream list, that's all it is, but immediately there were several that went down there about a week and a half wanting to fence in there. And I, so I told them we couldn't do anything unless this board voted to alter anything. So, if you guys want to dig in further, fine, but that's basically what it was.
I've, I've seen that fence and like, it needs, it needs some TLC put to it and I'm okay with it. If it's, you know, if it's something that, I don't know what it could cost to, because right now I think the monument itself is fenced in, correct?
Yeah, they're wanting to take that part down and use the good parts of that fence to make one fence just around the grave area.
That's where that fence is at, is around that monument where the trees have fell over on it, so. Some of, I mean, some of it's good, some of it's, I mean, actually I think some time back I went and talked to that welding group out at the Mass Park and trying to see if they would be interested in trying to salvage it, you know, as a project, but I don't know if they're still even out there anymore.
If I had to pick one other thing we need to work on, probably soon, is that one huge tree that's just west of the monument there in the parking lot. That thing, a high wind could take it down, I think, anytime, and if that was to hit the tree, it could be, or hit the monument, I think it could be serious. There's a lot of stumps out there, we need to get somebody to go out and grind them, but that one tree could play havoc on the monument, I think. I think you know which tree I'm talking about, right there, right as it pulls up to the monument there. So, we might want to think about that too, harden somebody, or local, or I don't care who, somebody, that one needs to come down, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, I guess my only thought is, is because the fence is around the monument, it keeps people from getting to the monument to do any kind of destruction to it, whether it would be better to try to go back and, and keep the whole area fenced and put a little bit more money into the fence if we need to, that's the only thing I think.
To be quite honest with you, that was my thoughts too, but the group didn't feel that was necessary. Yeah, so I was, okay.
So, are they, I mean, were they set on the type of fence that's there now because you can buy on one of those fences and, you know?
It's all up negotiation, but for what they were looking at, this was John Collins there, you know, he knows business, and he thought we ought to take that front end off and just preserve the back. Most people don't even realize that the cemetery there, and it's actually kind of sinking in, so we might, we might have to, or they might have to rest together, might have to come in and maybe put some field order in or something there, somewhere along the line.
Well, and me and you've talked about this before, I know when we mowed the cemetery down there, we talked about it. I think the area between the cemetery and the Pigeon Roost part, I think that, that whole hollow needs cleaned out. That's my, that's my thoughts. I think it needs taken out and cleaned out.
Can you do it, Jill?
And it's pretty well just under, undergrowth and what's there is about four or five dead trees and myself, I would, I would get that cleaned out and I'd like to, you know, put it in grass and that way I think it's going to make it look a lot better down there and, you know, I just think we need to spend, spend some time probably down there and try to make it look a little bit better and more presentable.
Just some time this winter, do you think you guys could do that? Yeah, it's, there's a lot of trees, there's a lot of brush in there too, so.
Yeah, and again, you know, like I said, and we've talked about this before and I'd still like to see, and we brought this up to the Tourism Board, you know, I've never, never heard anything back on this, but I still think that here in this county, we have not only the Pigeon Roost, but we have other places that need to have signs. And I have said that before and, and.
All around the county.
All around the county. If it's a, you know, I think it could be something that would, actually I would hope that they, maybe at some point that the Visitors' Commission could do, have something that would be mapped out as a driving tour or whatever of Scott County that says, hey, you know, here's what we can, here's what you can see if you go down this road and, and, you know, as I said before, you know, the Bogart family is the farm, actually my farm used to be part of that and it's one north to me now, so you know, there's some history there. Then also, you know, we talked about the Mesa Mitchell, that was a piper for General George Washington, he's buried out there on Terry Road. A lot of people don't even realize this, you know, and the only way to preserve that is have something out there that I think tells people that's, you know, who people has been and what they might have went on and do and lived here in Scott County or at some point in time, you know.
If any of you fellows ever get into Ripley County, you're talking about what you're talking about, they have some signs that are just perfect for what you're talking about. And I don't know who did them or paid for them or anything else, but it would be, if you ever go through VV, I think it's even some of them up over there, you get over in Ozgood and Bressel and over there, they got signs all around in little towns and I don't even, I'd explain to you, if they're not state markers, but they'd be some local markers, that would be perfect for what you're talking about. But anyway, so do you guys want to wait until next meeting, vote it in then? Because they won't, like I said, they won't be talking about it till, I think, January 5th to prove the money, so we don't have to now, but I want to make you aware of it. If you guys want to check into it, fine, or we can tell them, go ahead, whatever, I'm not.
I'm good either way. Like I say, I'm, I'd be okay with it, I think it needs some, some.
But if they do that, if they're making a decision, you mentioned maybe doing some other fencing stuff, it would be, that's what the asphalt will afford to take the old.
I'd rather see a plan of what they're planning on doing before we kind of.
Give Mary Beth a call, seriously.
Because otherwise, we approve what they may be aware, something that we're not even know what it's going to look like, so.
Well, and that's why I told them we gotta, this has got to be, this is a county property, so it's got to come through here. And the tree though, I would, I don't know if you can do that or harden somebody to, I'd like to get that one tree down. I think that, any, you never know when the high wind's going to take that thing over.
Yeah.
I don't even know what it costs, do you have any thoughts on that, Jill?
I, I wouldn't mind us doing it just for the purpose of how big it is and dangerous, but I don't know, it could be anywhere up to $3,000.
Well, it's got to be somebody knows what they're doing. Somebody knows to make sure which direction the tree's following.
Yeah.
So, if you guys want to give thoughts to that, I don't care either, but I mean, just, I think that's like priority.
And I, like I say, I know people that could probably take it down, but I'm going to say this, probably because of that monument, let's make sure they are licensed and bonded.
Absolutely. Well, you mentioned that price, but $3,000 is a lot of money, or $2,000 or whatever it's going to be, but that monument's priceless to local here, so.
So, I would, I would suggest that.
Can we look in on that? You might look in on it, Jill, and then maybe the next meeting we could make some decisions if I don't care about that.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we'll move right into the agenda. All right, before we move into the agenda, let me back up here. I jumped over, this is the December 2nd, 2020 meeting, and let the record show that all three commissioners are present at the county, along with the auditor, as usual, and we're glad to see you all tonight, so.
We don't mind if I shut for a little bit more.
No, you, no, you can, you can sit in the hall if you want to.
A lot of people would like to put me in the hallway. How far is it going to go before that hurts?
You sit up by the elevator.
I played us, you know, I talked about that earlier, putting a TV out there.
Yeah, you sit up by the elevator, I'll talk to you.
I just want to move a plus on it.
I don't mind you moving from me, but you might want to ask the person to your left there.
You got to start to make me feel like Rodney Dangerfield.
Ah, no. All right, first up is River Hills EDC Claim Consideration for the Lifespring Medical Facility for Services. That's $25,000, isn't it, Nick?
For, for River Hills, yes.
And then, and then we've got a pay application for $145,382?
Yes, sir. That is to the contractor. They have finished work on that project. It's gone through final inspection with the architect, they've cleared it, punch list goes all done. They've been done for a little while, we're trying to get them to submit this final payout so that we can get this, there's a CDBG grant, we want to get this thing closed out.
Sure.
So, now that we can get these funds moved in and out, we can move into that closeout process. These funds will be derived from Lifespring. They are wiring the money, I don't know if Tammy, if they've been received yet, but they notified me that they were borrowing that over today. So, I would ask that you approve these pending receipt of these funds.
And like I say, this, this money was through Lifespring.
Yes.
An original contract was $1,415,525.
Yes, sir.
And on change orders, I guess it was $37,000.
Yes.
So, it wound, completed and stored to date is $1,452,699.
Yes, sir.
Always amazes me how them never comes in 100%. You know, always amazes me, but anyway, yeah, do I hear a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
And Mike's second, so I'll make it unanimous and if you can clear your books, how's that?
That'd be great. And we will move into the closeout process for that, we'll be in front of y'all in a kind of push and signature items.
Do you need a signature on this anywhere?
I do have, did you include this in your packets?
I don't think I did, but if you want this.
This is just, this is a final inspection form for the labor standards for the project. It's stating that all the grant priorities and all the bid specs have been met to, to standards and the architect has signed off on that. Lifespring is okay with the work as, you know, sending the money indicates.
All right, so, yeah.
So, we just need a.
You just need somebody from, okay, all right. And it's the architect signed off and Lifespring did, what did you say?
Yeah. We did the labor standards, so we're good with it.
Okay. I will ask for a vote for approval. You on?
Yeah, I'm on.
I was, just for the public's sake, I was talking to Tammy about this earlier, I think sometimes people, we've talked about this before, this is a grant from the federal government and we're just kind of the pastor of everything, it's not coming, it's not exactly county funds.
Yeah, this was CDBG money, $500,000 of CDBG money issued through the state, through the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. Lifespring put up the matching, about $1 million for that facility out there and it will be a public benefit, but it has to go through the county.
Yeah, and people see us sometime and they'll see us procreating 140, all this kind of money and they're like, what some guy is doing?
Yeah, but it's not our money, it just passes through.
Yeah, it's, we're kind of a pastor at one, yeah.
I never noticed.
Shoulder surgery.
Doing better?
Yeah.
Well, good luck to you.
Just trying to do the normal thing.
Yeah.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Uh, the River, what was the River Hills EDC income survey?
I'm with Marty.
Okay.
We're going to do this first part together. Two of the three of you managed to hire me in 2018 as a part-time administrative assistant for the Plan Commission, and I know one of your questions, and I think you asked Obama's, do you have any goals? And I said, one of my goals is to see if we can get started at least with developing a new comprehensive plan. As we all know, that comprehensive plan is over 20 years old, very outdated, and so this is our first step, because in order to obtain a grant upwards to $50,000, you have to have a new income survey done. All yours, Melissa.
Thank you.
I've been pretty quick, eh? Here, take it and run with it.
And I think most of you know me, I'm Melissa Woods, I'm back with River Hills, I was with River Hills for about 12 years from '03 to '15, and I've had an opportunity to come back and my heart is there, so that's fine, I'm back here, just to give you a preface. So, comprehensive planning grant would also be through the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, which you just signed the documents with, Nick, that would be a county grant, though you would be required to put up 10% match for that project, which equals if, if a consultant came in with a RFQ for $50,000, then your match would be $5,555 essentially. So, you are only eligible to apply for that if you do an income survey, because the county does not qualify via census data at this time, surprisingly. You have to be at least 51% low to moderate income, so River Hills can do an income survey for you. We do those now, we didn't always. And I have a quote for those services, I've just been talking to Marty, just to kind of give you information, it's not a contract, it's just kind of give you an idea of what an upfront cost would be to do that. Looking at the information I have, it would require right up, upwards of about 40 responses from people throughout the county, and I would be reliant on a good list of addresses from the county in order to randomize that list and get down to 40 households initially that we would send out surveys to. And then, from there we'd go and just keep going until we got 40 responses, there you go.
But you're saying this, the income survey has to happen before we could do an income?
That's the only way you're going to be eligible. So, the good news about an income survey is once you do it and if it comes out above 51% low to moderate income, which makes you eligible, it's good for five years. So, what we estimated, and this is enough to exceed, so it'd be up to 10 hours of River Hills staff time, it may not take that long, but quite honestly, it probably will with the follow-up mailings we have to do.
So, in my goodness, right, basically you're wanting to apply for a grant and you need our permission to do that?
Well, yes, as long as, we need your permission.
We need your money.
We need your permission to do it. If you want, if you so choose to pursue a grant for the comprehensive plan, which would allow you to apply for about $50,000, we're just here to give you information on the income survey that needs to be completed prior to making that decision, because we have to do that in order to see if you qualify.
So, we can't proceed with any type of grant until we do the income survey?
Not the grants that we are currently aware of to give you money for a comprehensive plan, yeah.
I do have a question though. With this comprehensive plan that you're talking about, and I think there's been some discussion between the cities of wanting to do one as a group and not them do one, Skysburg do one, Austin do one, us do one, so, you know, would that be something that we need to do prior, make arrangements to do that prior to this, or?
I was aware of those conversations being had throughout the county with the two municipalities in the county. We, being an economic development district, regional planning commission, would strongly suggest that each of you do your own.
Reason being?
Reason being, a comprehensive plan is pretty comprehensive, and so if you're trying to include all the needs, the true needs of each municipality on top of the county as a whole, I think you're going to miss out, I think you're going to, yeah, I think you're going to miss out on things as far as a standpoint of being eligible to apply for grants, not being eligible necessarily, but justifying your need. I think it's a stronger case when you have your own comprehensive plan as opposed to an overall. If that makes sense.
It does, but that's the first time I've heard somebody say that.
It's a good ques, it's a good question and we've already thought about it, we've had the conversation, I've had the conversation with the city, just to let you know, we are beginning the process of an income survey for the city for the same purpose.
But you're telling them the same thing you're telling us, is that it's better off for them to do it individually?
Yes, yeah, and we've already, I sent out the income, the initial income surveys on their first list this week, earlier this week, so.
We're only about 20 years behind, so.
Yeah, and when, you know, even though a comprehensive plan may not necessarily make you meet the requirements to apply for an application, when you're justifying that need with a comprehensive plan, funders want to see that, that you have a plan in place, that you have some skin in the game, and not only that, it's important for the county for y'all to know the direction you're headed, so.
I just took a, a, a survey that came to me from the Extension Service and what they were asking about green space and flood mitigation and all, and I'm going, my goodness, I don't think we even thought about that back 20 some years ago. So, you know, there's a lot more that's going to have to be included in a new comprehensive plan if we wanted a workable plan for the future.
Well, if you're helping, Skysburg or Austin or both, that would also, I think, would help us coordinate to make sure we're not overlapping each other somehow or other, maybe not.
Yeah, I mean, we are not helping Austin at this time, that doesn't, doesn't mean we want the future, but right now we're not at the table, we are at the table with Skysburg for their comprehensive plan.
Well, as, as much as I agree, it's just we ought to do our own, but at the same time, we don't want to be taking off in two different directions.
Oh.
You know, there ought to be some kind of unity here, I think.
And Melissa, when we talked the other day, one of the, we're having individuals as well as the county comprehensive, was that there are grants and they're, they're only eligible for certain cities to apply or certain counties to apply, correct? So, as each, each agency would have their own, it would open them up to more grant opportunities, correct? Yeah, and justifying their need, you know, if you have a storm drainage need, uh. It might not be the whole county's need, but it might be Skysburg's. Right, right, exactly, yeah.
And it's possible, one, the city could get the grant and the county couldn't or vice versa?
It's possible, quite honestly, as long as the funds are there with Oprah, it's not a hugely competitive process, I'm going to sit here and say that and then it got pretty wrong, but typically, as long you, as you cross your Ts and dot your Is, and I can tell you, sadly sometimes from a certain perspective, you know, Scott County doesn't necessarily rise to the top in the state, we all know that, but on a grant.
We rise to the top, but maybe not only where you want them.
And I don't, I'm a resident here, I love this place, it's why I want to come back and work and do what I do, but when you're talking about a grant in that perspective, we kind of do rise to the top because of our need that we have. So, another thing just to add, you know, there's a huge focus on broadband right now and that would definitely be part of your comp plan. I'm stuck personally in a position right now, I have no access other than a hotspot, so I can truly sympathize with anyone who does not have access to broadband, and we're getting calls literally every week, can you help us? And so, I would, you know, I would assume that that would be part of your comp plan, I would advise that it would be, and that also would open up opportunities for any kind of funding that might come down the pipe for that need, and we know the federal people are focusing on that.
That needs, that need is nationwide.
Yeah, it is, especially now, yeah.
And actually, you'd be surprised how many people in this county doesn't have, you know, they're using hotspots because they don't have it. Now, actually, I'm kind of upset with Frontier, didn't, you know, when they came in there and asked to place those boxes out on Smith Road and stuff, that guy flat out said that he was going to go airborne on 203 all the way to Lexington and be able to get internet service. Wow, didn't happen now. Stops Smith Road and that's it, whoa.
Well, you're right about people hotspots, we get them down to the museum out in the parking lot, you'll see them in different fast food places all over the place. There's some people, I, that McDonald's boy who was out there playing cards over there, people would literally come in there and their kids do their homework in there, you know? I sat in a meeting in Washington DC and that was one of the biggest things that came up in a three-state area, Wisconsin, Minnesota and Indiana, was that broadband, and they said that some of these outlined communities, kids can't do their homework at home and they have to go to, go in town, their parents have to drive them off the farm into town to the library to do their homework and.
And they're doing it remotely.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, think about that now, if you're virtual, you're not virtual because you don't have access, so, that's, that is a good point.
That is just one of the things that could touch on, and that's going to be huge.
I think we need to get this moving onward.
We've talked about this, like you say, 20 years is long enough and it's time to move, and so I would, I would certainly, I'm in favor of it, it's $1,200, $1,240 is basically your, is what you're saying.
And what I could do, this is not a contract, I could come back to the next meeting if you wanted me to forward, bring an official contract that your attorney has reviewed and.
I'm forget, I'm ready.
You're ready?
Well, I already have a motion now.
But I'll make a motion that we approve the estimate here, she's talking about like $1,240, and Tammy knows where to reach for that money, I suppose.
I'm not sure, we're going to reach for that money, but we can, we can try, yeah, we can try, but if you're.
We have a habit sometimes with bypassing her, well, it's a hurt sometimes.
Yeah, and I have time to look to see where the.
But we can still pass it, right?
Provided funding?
Yeah, we'll do that.
I'll second that.
I'll make that unanimous and I'm, and I'm also going to say that, and this is more public than anybody, it's, you know, it's just like we're talking about these grants, there's a lot of grants out here that we could obtain, we don't have the information, that's a part of it. So, if you receive one of these in the future, please feel free to fill it out and get it back, because, you know, that's probably the problem with the census, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't get 100% back on the census and so, you know, if you, that's the first thing that these people's going to look at, is they don't, they don't want to see numbers, you know, they don't want to see that, and if people would take the opportunity, I think we could obtain more grants that would help this county in entirety, but we just, we just don't get the information. this county in an entirety, uh, but we just, we just don't get the information back. So, I would, uh, plead with the people that they get one of these income surveys, fill it out and get it back as quick as possible so that we can. And it's just something that's gonna be used to bring better things, money to the county, that's gonna make things better for everybody, I hope.
Let's see, where the city's pleading online, online and stuff, telling people, hey, if you get an, get a phone call or mailing for an income survey, please fill it out in some fact, so they are in the process.
Yeah, and the days we live in, and sadly, but in the, in the times we live in right now, how many phone calls do we get a day that with somebody wanting to know something that's really none of their business to start with? And we have, you know, you don't know who you're giving to. So, that's the, that's the key to it, I think, is to make sure that the people of this county do, uh, understand that, yes, this is legit. If they happen to send you something or call you, then, uh, we would hope that they would respond in a positive manner. Uh, myself, you know, I think it could just be good for everybody, so.
Um, just to clarify, so do you want me to bring back the contract? Or are you okay with having it reviewed by the attorney and contingent upon his review? I just wanna make sure I do things accordingly.
Uh, not so much his review as it is, uh, twelve hundred and fifty dollars, forty dollars.
Okay.
Let's just make sure, let's, let's make, just stay in contact with her, or we found that twelve hundred and forty dollars.
Okay.
So, that's the big thing.
And do you want Tammy to be my point of contact, or one of you all?
Uh, I'm, she can do it as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
And I'll have you looking at the list for me. Who can, should I contact nine one one for the list of addresses?
I actually have the tax bill if you need, yeah. I, I've actually worked through part of this at one time.
That's right, yeah.
When I say Esther and Nick and Raymond Jones and I, we got so far, and then it just, we just kinda dissipated a little bit. Um, and so, I'm kind of understanding, uh, 'cause Jill went through how things have changed.
They have, to our benefit.
Yes, hundreds of survey responses that wanted to be needed versus forty. So, this is awesome, and it, it is, back to your point about, I can't believe the census, but maybe twenty, twenty, I hate to say, I hope we come in, in LMI, but it's, yeah, so, yeah, that's fine.
Is that, is, is, you're saying an income survey of about forty recipients?
Forty households, yeah.
Now, is them households, is it so many from each area that has to be done, or they, they in one area? How, how are they, how do they decide?
I'll take the good list that Tammy provides to me, and we are given a process by Oprah to randomize the list.
Okay.
And it, it'll, it'll randomize it, and we basically take the first forty.
Okay.
And we have to prove all of that to Oprah, you know, make copies of the process and-
You're not picking, though.
We're not picking, no.
It's like a random throw.
It, it is, yeah.
I'm, 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 I think I've got that information saved on my desktop somewhere, and so, we will-
We can talk, yeah, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, just to give you a little more information, it'll take us some time to complete the income survey. But, we know we're out for the January fifteenth deadline. It's a quarterly basis. If funding's available by April fifteenth, Oprah's gonna be waiting on their distribution of federal funding. We could possibly go in then, but we might be looking at July fifteenth, just to give you an idea of when an application might go in. But I'll be coming to see you way before then with things under signs, so.
Well, that's, uh, a step ahead of where we're at now.
That's a big step.
And I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
And thank you, Marty. All right, thank you all so much.
Thanks. All right, next up is the-
Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait.
Oh, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait.
I've got November reports for you.
I don't, I don't have that on my sheet.
I know you don't. You threw that in. Just wanted to let you know, uh, the, the, um, level of activity we've had. Still, a lot of people calling for permit information, um, and we keep visiting.
Keep building.
Keep building. They are still building. We're still interested in building. Especially now that the, uh, apparently the materials have gone down just a little in cost over the high that we have all experienced.
Yeah, that was, uh, shocking to see some of the prices.
Wasn't there some, uh, I don't know, I can't even think of one, wouldn't you think we talked about where you might need some ordinances or something to?
Yes, and that will be part of a comprehensive plan.
Okay, so, we're gonna have to wait then, or you don't?
Um, I will start making up to help Melissa to, you know, to see where we are weak and where other counties have anticipated or have experienced and reacted.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, gentlemen.
Ladies.
All right, next up, Tom, come on up here.
Hopefully, you have a contract that's kind of a formality that every year, um, through Purdue University, the county has already appropriated that amount of money. It's just a contract to provide the services for the two and a half educators that we have.
Is that, uh, is that the same amount as it was last year?
Yeah, they very much understood, you know, try, times that we're in trying, and they did not make any increased requests.
Again, uh, this is the same contract as we've done for, seems like forever, uh, with, uh, Purdue University and, and, uh, the extension service, so, uh-
And the way it's usually been in the past, I mean, the county council has approved the monies, and the commissioner usually sign the agreement.
I'll make a motion to accept it. Yeah, and I'm gonna second my last question too. You'd liked it earlier, just where does that money come from?
It's, as Tom explained, it's a budgetary function with council. Statutorily, we are required to engage those services through Purdue. So, um, that amount is looked at from the extension office, and at budget time, they put in estimated contract amount for the next year. So, the council takes care of that.
Yeah, but it's county. I, we, we wanna do it. I just sometimes need to know where we're reaching, grabbing stuff sometimes, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I second that, yeah.
And I'll, if I let you turn that, or I can give it to Tammy and look, maybe she would state it or- What's that name, and then she'll probably wanna make a copy or something.
Council might make the motion, but I didn't-
John's second, and I might be unanimous.
And very quickly, very last thing, is, uh, I'm an early holiday card and a handmade gift from our office and the fouragers.
Well, thank you very much.
Came from walnut tree on my place that blew down, and I just cut the, cut the little thing up into some things and fouragers, put the four H on there.
And folks, this is walnut. That could be a very expensive one right there. But walnut's really pretty priced.
Lost that in the spring, I think, when one of them storms came through and came down. Yep. So, it's not professionally totally dried, and you may be seeing some cracking checking on the backside, but hopefully-
I do, I appreciate that.
Thought was cancerous, yep.
All right.
That's all I had unless y'all had something else for me.
I don't, I don't at this time, I don't believe.
I was gonna say, we're sorry you're gonna be-
How's our tree doing outside?
Really great. I haven't had the water anymore since we've been getting protected. But, next spring, I'll probably fertilize it a couple times in a few months, but it should be coming along good.
Yeah.
And I was gonna say, so sorry that Bob won't be back next year, but sometime first of the year, I'll probably, uh, bring back to y'all discussion about county weed board, like I mentioned before, that that has been addressed before. About maybe we need to reactivate that.
I think, uh, I think that certainly needs to be replaced myself. So, yeah, uh, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for all you do.
Health department. Michelle, how are you tonight?
I'm good. By myself, it's a little west coast.
I know, it's not fun, though.
I guess a little.
You guys think it's fun, it's not fun for me.
It's not entertaining.
We kinda-
We've all been there, though.
I tell you what.
Right, you're like sucking it all in.
That's pretty funny.
Okay, um, I'll start out with me, if you guys have any questions for me. I know there were some changes made today, um, with CDC guidelines and quarantining, if you have been exposed to COVID. But I think maybe that's a conversation for even county employees, 'cause I know you had to call me today about one. So, they still recommend fourteen days if you've been exposed. That's like the gold standard. If you can do that, great. Uh, I think what's happening is that multiple people in different, you know, whether it's factories, healthcare, or, not healthcare's kind of exempt, but factories and, you know, just day-to-day jobs, they're kind of running out of time of giving people fourteen days. Um, and people, I think, are becoming not compliant with that. So, the CDC has said, you have two options. You have a seven-day option, which, um, and this only applies to people who are showing no symptoms. Obviously, if you've been exposed and you're showing symptoms, this does not apply to you. But if you've been exposed and you're not showing symptoms, um, you can get tested on day five, so forty-eight hours before day seven. On day seven, if you are still asymptomatic, um, then you can, on day eight, after you finish your seventh day, you can be out of quarantine. Um, they still recommend, you know, wearing a mask, really monitoring your symptoms over those next seven days till you're up to fourteen days, but that's option one. Option two is, uh, if you don't have testing or you don't want to get tested, maybe you don't wanna get your child tested, that's when exposed. Um, as long as it's been ten days, no symptoms, on that eleventh day, they can come out of quarantine. So, um, our schools have that information, um, sent out to Tammy. Now, can the schools or an employer say, we still wanna abide by the fourteen days? Absolutely, they can do that.
And that's gonna be, I'm sorry.
Uh, here, here's, here's the problem that I'm seeing with this.
Sure.
And I may see things different than other people. But, uh, what I'm seeing is, is I can see that if you're in the, in the right type of position, uh, the seven-day option. But I think it, I think it makes a big difference whether you work in a office atmosphere where you're sitting in a room with people, or if you're a truck driver and you're in the truck by yourself most of the time, uh, or, you know, of that nature. But I think somewhere, I, I guess the question I'm gonna have is, and that may be more of a legal question, but at some point, I can see this becoming a problem, that Joe over here only had to stay quarantined seven days, but Joe over here had to stay quarantined fourteen days because their department head said, you're gonna stay quarantined for fourteen days.
Right.
Because they work in a different field or whatever.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, it's, to me, it's, it's a whole lot of all over the board right now. And it looks to me like it would be simpler to just to say, here's your quarantine period, this is what you gotta be, and it's gotta be that way.
Right.
Uh, but I can see where, uh, I guess maybe you have essential and non-essential, uh, because I think if you, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's what they're looking at. But as far as, uh, I can see where that could be problematic in the future. Uh, if you've got, you know, one school adopts, or, I'm not just using that school as a, a reference here, but if you've got one school that's using the fourteen days and another one uses the seven, at some point, I think, I think it becomes legal by then.
Right.
I really do. And, uh, so, I'm, 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 you know, like I say, I don't know what the right answer is here, but I'm just saying, I can see problems with that.
Because whether you do fourteen days, seven days, or ten days, it, it's still guidelines. There's still requirements. Uh, and probably gonna come back to, are you gonna pay those people, are you not? And with the kids, I don't know. I don't really see how that's a legal thing unless you're-
Yeah, well, I think, I think what it's gonna come down to is, is the fact that, uh, if somebody has, uh, you know, whether, whether you have a, you know, if you have a seven-day option plan in place, for essential workers, and, uh, the rest is, is a ten-day or fourteen-day option plan, then at that point, I think, uh, if somebody's out of time, and after that seven days, they say, well, how come I can't come back because he did? And now, I'm not gonna get paid for five days or whatever. Uh, that was, that's, I think, what we gotta look at. And, but I do think it's different whether you're setting, you know, in a, in a piece of equipment out here working by yourself, or if you're setting in this office right here.
Sure, yeah, like, I feel like in my role, like, I really can be in my office eighty percent of the day.
Yeah.
Whereas the sheriff's deputy, they're interacting with the public every day, so.
And, but, uh, again, you can.
Right.
And, and, but now, there is offices, uh, not only here, but throughout, uh, but I'm just speaking for the county right now. Uh, there's offices here in this courthouse that has five or six people sitting in them. That, they're all, they can't go in an office and shut the door. They're in an open area. Now, they are six foot apart, uh, to the, I think, to the, uh, most standards.
Yeah.
But, you're still in that same office with them.
Right.
And I think that's the only thing we gotta look at, I would think.
Right, but then also to that point, like, instead of that office being closed fourteen days, maybe not only close a week, because you might be able to, you know what I mean? Like, I think there's pros and cons, like, the con is that, um, if you let somebody come back seven days after being tested on day five, um, I think the statistics was five to twelve percent chance of still being positive, you know, between that seven and fourteen day mark. Um, ten days, I think it went down to like a one to ten percent chance. So, there's still a chance someone could test positive, so you kinda just have to weigh, you know, is it worth bringing somebody back a little bit early? And, you know, beating the odds that it's a ninety percent chance they'll remain negative and asymptomatic, or not.
I'm guessing you probably get floods of questions after these orders come down from the public.
Oh, my gosh, it's like, we know when something's happened, 'cause of-
And I know that, and, and all my dealings with you, you have done everything you could to try to work with people. Not everybody likes it, but, but I'm looking at this, it sounds like you probably tried to work with people to pump up some options here for them.
Well, I think that's from the state, so, you know, they, I think a lot of people are happy to see this. Um, like I said, I see it both ways. Like, I think it's, I think it's gonna be nice for our kids to come back to school sooner. But I do worry, 'cause I, I do know of people, we had somebody test today with a rapid test, that they were thirteen days of their quarantine, and then they tested positive. So, I know that happens too, so, it's hard to-
So, so, back to that test, um, 'cause I, I heard of it, and I'm gonna say it's a story, 'cause I was told third hand or fourth hand or whatever, but that someone tested positive here in Scott County, went to the hospital in another county because he was a COVID patient, and they shipped most of them out, and tested negative there.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, that seventy-five percent that, you know, it's, it's a good test, or it's a bad test?
I, I would say if they're having symptoms and it's positive. That's pretty spot on. Um, I, I say this, and, um, I've heard this from the, you know, physicians and state health officials, the test is only as good as the swab. So, I've been swabbed several times. Some of them went a little farther back than others. You know what I mean? Like, so, are they getting a good sample when they swab? Um, so, I think that plays into it too, but have people tested positive, negative? I think EMS has had that, like, I think with like an exposure, they tested negative here at Scott, shipped them out to Clark. When they got to Clark, they do another test on them, tested positive, so opposite of that situation.
It, it sounds to me like there's just no hundred percent of this.
Everything is-
Yes, I mean, so it's kinda like you gotta make your best guess, don't you?
We, yes.
Best educated guess. But the other thing about this, what you, you've got here is, is these are guidelines to the, to your question about how do you, you know, the legal part of telling somebody you're fourteen days or whatever. As a business or as a county government, if we say our policy's fourteen days, then this is a guideline. This isn't law. You know, if we, if we, or my company, I, it's my company that says it's fourteen days, and, and at the fourteenth day, you have to be, you have to be four, or seventy-two hours without medication and symptom-free and fever-free.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, and that's a little over the top, 'cause it's only twenty-four hours of CDC guidelines.
Yeah, so, so, you know, if you don't wanna work for that company, then don't follow their guidelines. And same thing here, if we say it's fourteen days, it's fourteen days.
Yeah.
If we decide that we're gonna say it's seven-day option or a ten-day option, then that's what we're saying it is, so. So, I guess, to, to clarify or get out of the mud or whatever, is to say, you know, are we gonna accept these guidelines? Because if we do, then everybody needs to play by the same rules. I mean, somebody can't say it's, no, I'm gonna go fourteen days, and, but-
And, yeah, I agree a hundred percent, uh, with that. The only thing, uh, that, and the point I was trying to make is, is, I have to guess, is, I can see where maybe, uh, if somebody's working by theirself, kinda, and that you could bring them back quicker than fourteen days. But I, I, you know, I, but whatever we gotta do, we gotta do.
I just think that-
I think it's gotta be a matter of-
When you do this, is that like for every business in the county, or we-
That is like a general lie.
So, I mean, if we do this, we're telling every business in the county, we're not mandating, we're telling this is what they should be doing.
We, yeah, so like when a business calls us and they say, um, I have an employee that's positive, what do I do? We used to say, well, they need to quarantine for ten days for the people that are positive, and then the people they've exposed, those people need to quarantine for fourteen days from the last time they were around that person. But now, we're going to have to say, well, you have some options. But now we're going to have to say, well, you have some options.
Yes.
So they can't, one, they can't force, no one can be forced to be tested, so, um, the seven day rule may apply or may not, depending on if that employee refuses testing. So at a minimum, the fourteen days is gonna drop down to a ten, as long as someone does not have symptoms.
Where I'm going, if we're gonna tell everybody they gotta do fourteen days, we're gonna pass an ordinance, wouldn't we?
No, I think.
I mean, we're telling the McDonald's and all these places, they gotta do that.
We're not telling, this is just for the county employees.
That's what I'm, that's what I was going, we were talking about.
Recognition.
Yeah, so for us.
Yeah, no, so not a county-wide thing, just for your employees that you guys are over. Because right now, it's kind of up in the air whether, what you want them to do, and you guys are the ones that decide that, so.
Well, that'd make it easier.
Yeah.
Since I started mandating all the businesses, I got.
No, it, this is just for.
And we have some very unique situations that arise like anybody else would as far as an employer goes. And it also depends on once that starts in your household, what is your last day of contact with anybody that's positive? Because it's obviously the last day, uh, could be of somebody's tenth day, that's your day zero, and then you start fourteen days after that. I'm in a situation myself with that in, in an area near the county. And then it's also about accurate reporting of when the person last fevered, when was twenty-four hours from that? I mean, people have to be really aware, and they may be trying to stay away from each other, but they also have to be aware of that person's symptoms that's got that in their household, to be accurately quarantining after we figure out when's the best day to start day zero with them and start quarantine. The other thing is, is the morale of the other people in your department. When this person returns who has been isolated or, or positive.
Yeah.
Coming off the illness, do they feel comfortable? You know?
I get, where, where are we at, we're at the fourteen days right now, correct?
That's what we do right now.
I, I mean, as far as.
But it's not an ordinance or it's not a policy, we're just doing it.
That's CDC guy, that was CDC guidelines up until today.
Uh, but I think, uh, myself, I, I, I just feel like that you have, you, you, I feel like the fourteen days for the county is probably just to leave it as it is, and that's what it's been, I think would probably, myself.
I agree with that.
I, I just, I just think it's, you know, and the sad fact of it is, and it, and this is a sad fact, um, you know, I know, uh, that there's people, uh, that has tested positive that, uh, has not quarantined like they was supposed to, uh, that's been, uh, out, uh, in the public, and some people do not take this seriously. And, uh, you know, when you, when you do stuff like that, uh, and they don't work for us, but, uh, I do know that's happened, and, uh, it's a sad fact of life that, uh, we, you know, people talk about, uh, we'd like to live in Mayberry. You know, and the whole thing, we turn back the hands of the clock. The only, and, and the only way that you can do that is, 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 is we've become a, I hate to say it, but we've become a society that, uh, we're, we're the me society, it's all about me, it's not about their neighbors, it's not about somebody that they may infect, is if it holds me down, uh, I'm not gonna do it. And that's sad, uh, I hate to see that. Uh, but if you want to make a difference, then do what you're supposed to do, and I think we'll get through this fine. Uh, but I think they have to be held, uh, accountable for that, and, uh, they're, they're not being at this point.
Um, let me give an example, because I know this is gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
Tomorrow, there's gonna be a situation that we can't even predict, because we're gonna have to call you guys. Um, and I'm just gonna use the highway department because it's, it's cold outside. So Jill has somebody who's positive, and we have to quarantine six of her people. And then we get a massive snowstorm five days later.
Let's change that fourteen days then.
Let's say, do you, do they, can we fall, are you guys gonna say, well, let's test them and bring them back with the, the seven day rule? Or is it fourteen days, you know?
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, yeah.
There is going to be special circumstances, so.
Can I offer a thought process? I think you need to look at them, as you alluded to a while ago, is who's essential and who's not essential. And I think your non-essential people, which would be typically your clerical people, most of your people in the courthouse, blah, blah, blah. Your essential is gonna be your public safety, your public emergency, because they are running short of people left and right. Because when one of them breaks down, there's a whole area that breaks down, and the quicker they can get them healthy and back, the better their department is because they've got the, the emergency load on them. You've got nine-one-one, that's a congregant area over there, they run shorthanded, so the sheriff's department, and you've got EMS, it's critical services as well, and you could throw highway in there too, because sometimes there's a very essential nature to the highway department. If those department heads were given the discretion to, we prefer the fourteen, but depending on your situation at the time and what is going on, you can opt for the ten or seven based on their conversation with Michelle as to what the best guideline is for that. But basically, the other non-essentials need to stick to a fourteen, because we're the ones that typically are based in base filling out papers and doing work with the public, as well as in tighter working quarters.
Well, one of the things that I would say about the seven, ten day or the fourteen is that, uh, if, if someone is showing no symptoms whatsoever, and they're quarantined at home, and they, they were someplace at somebody else that tested positive and, and somebody said, well, you're quarantined because you were, you were in the same vicinity as they were. I could see where, if we weren't, if we weren't paying them, where it would be a detriment to them to be quarantined because we're, we're forcing you to stay home.
We're for one week without pay.
And you're not, we're not gonna pay you, but you're not coming back to work. Well, that's to me, and, and you never have the first symptom, but you never know if you are or not.
Right.
But in, in the highway department, and, and quite honestly, well, I can't even, I won't even use the sheriff's department, because, uh, they would, they could be in a car by themselves all day long.
Yeah, they're a little different because they're first responders.
But, uh, not the jail.
But in the, but in the highway department, in the case that they would get caught up for a snow, two of them aren't gonna ride in that dump truck together. Uh, so, you know, if you're, you're not showing any symptoms whatsoever, uh, you know, just like Bob said, if you're out in the middle of the field in a, in a tractor and, and you're never around anybody, then why are you, if you're, if you're, instead of sitting home watching Mayberry, I mean, you could be, uh.
But then, I guess, I'm gonna speak for Jill, maybe she's thinking this, so you call that person in who's on quarantine, well, they weren't expecting to get a call in, and then what if they refuse to come in, or they're not capable of driving?
I think it's an individual, if, if that person doesn't wanna come in, don't feel comfortable to come in, then I think that's, there's no, there can't be any discretionary against them.
They could always come up with symptoms real quick.
Oh, I, well, heck, I do it all the time. All a driver has to do to have the C D L say, I don't feel safe, it's over, the conversation's over, they don't come to work.
I think we're just have to do the best we can with this. I, I mentioned the jail a minute ago, I worry every day that it's gonna flux through over there, and you don't have enough jailers to watch the inmates. Uh, it's scary.
Yeah.
So I, I kinda glad you brought that up, we do need a little bit of leeway here.
Well, the only thing I could suggest on that then is, again, it's kind of like I was saying a while ago, is the only way I could, you know, uh, whatever we do, uh, we're gonna have to do across the board.
Yeah.
Now, the only way around, I think that would be, would be decide, uh, who is essential and who is considered non-essential workers. And at that point, you're essential workers, you could, if you could say, you know, that you wanna do the seven day option, then at that point, maybe that's, uh, that's, that works.
Didn't we make a decision a while back?
I don't, I don't think we ever had anything, and I think we need that, probably would be to say, okay, you know, what, what is considered essential? And, uh, I think that's probably what we're gonna have to.
The only thing I remember we questioned, whether they all, the thing about the seven day is that, at the end of the fifth day, they have to take a test.
Yeah, fifth, sixth, or seventh day.
So, so in turn, the only, the ten day option is if you have no symptoms and at the tenth day, you come back to work without a test.
Correct.
You know, so you're pretty much rolling the dice that four more days, you're not gonna be, have a symptom, you know? And, and quite honestly, that's, uh, as you're calculating your days, oh, was it this day I saw him or this day? And were they, were they sick? I mean, I, I mean, I know people that are, have COVID right now, and, and, you know, that they, they were around people five days ago, and then they tested.
I will say that, um, we're seeing that trend, like, it seems to be, people are getting quicker, sicker after they've been exposed. Um, and I don't know if that's just because the virus is mutating, there's no studies that say that that's happening, but just our personal observations, that seems to be what's happening.
I, I'm guessing, if somebody's off seven days, they get paid for five, wouldn't they?
Well, we, here's the thing.
I don't have any more to do.
Depending on how it rolls, I mean, you're, you don't get paid for a weekend anyway.
That's what, yeah.
You get that to eighty hours of pay, depending on your regular two-week work schedule. So whatever, if somebody's part-time and they work ten hours a week, they get twenty hours of COVID pay. If they're thirty-five hours like we are, they're seventy, if they're the highway, they're eighty. So that's the max, that they get all the way through December thirty-first, or we're on the first, second of December now. So we're almost through that, so a lot of people that have already been through one quarantine have no COVID pay left.
Right.
So if they get quarantined now, we're looking at them being off of two weeks without pay. We're at the end of the year, we know what's coming up, you know, the little red man and the suit and all this kind of stuff, and we're in, you know, it's not, it's not easy, because me as a department head, I don't wanna have somebody, because we're saying fourteen, and then we'll pretend the assessor's office has somebody come back in seven, and I've got somebody really mad at me because they lost a week of pay.
That's what I'm saying, it's gotta be across the board. Yeah, the decision's gotta be made across the board, is this is a, this is a matter of policy, what, uh, just like U P S does.
You just had one rule, basically, now you've got options, and this is where it gets dicey.
I guess the question I would have is, uh, if we're talking about county employees here, at the fifth day, are we paying for that second test, or are they paying for it?
Um, testing is really free anywhere, yes, yeah.
So if they go on the fifth day, are they, would they get their results back within the seventh day?
Some places would, some places they may not get their result back till day eleven.
That's what I'm saying, because I know people that went back to work on the fourteenth day and they still hadn't got their result yet.
Um, so, but, you know, they could do, um, a rapid test, they can, a lot of labs are starting to pick up now that more rapid testing is happening, so not as many tests are going to labs, which is allowing labs to catch back up. Um, so hopefully, they would have that test back by the seventh day, but maybe not.
They could still be off.
So Bob, what do you think, do the, do the essential thing right now? Who's essential and who's not?
I, I, I mean, I can, I, I can see.
Get that over with.
I can see that's gonna be the thing, is, is, in my opinion, it's gonna be, okay, who is essential? Because I'm sitting here and I'm, of course, looking back, back here, if you've got an EMS worker, uh, you know, that's not showing no symptoms, then seven days would be probably a good option for them. Uh, the deputy sheriffs, the people inside the jail, uh, the jailers, I think at that point, yes, that would be something. Uh, county highway department, uh, but again, I'm, I'm, you know, whatever, I think we get, we either have to have essential and non-essential or just do one blanket thing, and I don't know that one blanket thing is what we're gonna do.
And some of those, like, um, Shannon, like, his group falls under healthcare workers, so they fall under a different set of rules. Um, sheriff's department deputies, not the jail, fall under a different set of rules, um.
Now, 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 explain that to me.
So, because, cl- critical infrastructure, right, so you need your EMS, you need your first responders to be working, so they're kind of already under this rule of, they can be at work if they're exposed, they have to wear a mask a hundred percent of the time. Um, don't have anyone riding in the car with them. Um, yes.
Okay.
So.
So we had the same thing, we had six firemen that were quarantined.
Yeah.
So.
So we know who they are, and we're just not going on that part anyway, get it over with, essential workers?
Cause I mean, you have some people in the courthouse now that are quarantined.
Yeah.
So they're gonna be calling.
I'd say as long as it's not somebody cooped up in an office like Tammy's, people are in this area, I'd say that, you know, they're people, maybe Jeff's people, because starting, again, starting the day that you think you're, you know, you know, contracted or around somebody, you could have passed somebody in Walmart, I mean, but, uh, it's, it's all on one day you think you, you know, you've had that exposure, so.
Yeah. Most, most of the time, people know because that person just called them and said, hey, whenever I was playing cards with you on Friday night, like, I got sick on Saturday, got tested.
No, I'm talking about if, if somebody walked down the hallway here and next thing you know, they go, well, I was in the courthouse, well, I was too, and all, you know, you gotta be within an area of somebody.
Yes, you have to be the six feet, fifteen minutes.
And you gotta be fifteen minutes in it, yeah, that's what I thought, so.
Yep, yep.
I don't have a problem with doing the seven and the ten day for the, these guys, of course, they're already technically.
Right, yeah, they already fall under.
Sheriff departments are already under that.
I think the only one that wouldn't be is, uh, would be the highway department and probably, uh, the jailers and the nine-one-one, correct?
And me, yes, so my people was, you know, you get quarantined.
So we should add those people into this list then?
Uh, I would, I mean, I, I think that to call them essential, I think we would, but I, uh, we'd put a.
And we say sheriff, we're, we know, I'm thinking we need to put the jailers in on that.
I, I mean, I mean the jailers.
Sheriff and S D Ms has their own.
Yeah, because the sheriff's department and EMS, like you said, they're, they already fall under something different anyway. Uh, but I think that, uh, the county highway, the nine-one-one, uh, jailers and the, uh, health department.
Highway.
I, I said highway.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's four of them, jailers, highway department, nine-one-one, health department, is there anybody else that you'd think of that would be?
Uh, I would maybe question judges, I don't know, Amanda might be able to answer a little bit more than I can. Like, is that something that you need to keep looking for?
I hate to speak for Chris, because I don't know what Chris would say.
Right, right.
I think that the, the judges have done a fine job as far as trying to limit the number of people coming up for court hearings. And we're doing as much as possible via Zoom, um, and telephonically, email, things to that effect. Um, our office is trying to do our best to limit contact with having people come up, um, try not to let anybody through, through that threshold. Um, if they, if they are allowed in our office, they have to maintain their mask at all times. Um, we're spread out six feet, some of us are in our own offices, so, but, um, there are functions that somebody's going to have to cover from our office, so we're making sure that we're not violating people's rights. But a lot of that stuff we can do from home, we can work from home if something happened at the courthouse, shut down or whatever, as long as we've got scanners, we've got our laptops, as long as we've got access to the internet, um, you know, that we can work together and bill charges and do things to do the best to keep the court functioning, um, and not violating anyone's rights.
I think they've had that, they've had, and you guys have had some people quarantined in those areas, so.
We had four people out.
And they've all worked around it, so, I mean, I get phone calls and say, you know, they're staying home, and everybody else is kind of doing their own thing.
And the first time around, I was on maternity leave, so I don't know really how that went, because I was home with the baby and a kid that got home.
I'm like you, I remember the phone call too, and they were already doing what they gotta do.
I think court systems pretty much run on their own, so.
Couple more is I T, we've got a one man department.
I T and, uh, maintenance, yes.
Well, I told both of them when there was a situation before, I said, uh, well, he goes, what happens if something goes down? I said, you wait till everybody leaves the building, go in and do whatever you're gonna do, you know? So I told both of them that, so, I mean, and, you know, and you're right, but, but just say they were really sick and couldn't come in, we'd have to harp them up, we'd have to call them up, wouldn't we? I mean, it's essential. There's two other, there are two other, or one other maintenance guy and another, so, I mean, that, and most of that could be.
That could be corrected, I mean, we could, yeah.
So you want I T and maintenance on your essential list as well? Because that would get them to, if they're okay, they could come back in seven or ten days, depend on what they did, rather than waste the full fourteen?
Yeah, we could do that, I'm okay with that, yeah, I'm okay with that.
They're kind of.
And, uh, and really what you're, and, and I guess really what you're limiting then is just office workers, more or less, here in the courthouse. Uh, that's gonna be confined in, in, you know, if you've got five or six people confined in one office, then at that point, I, I, that's what I'm, I'm looking at. I think it's a whole different story than, than, like I say, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Tammy's office is completely different than what I have.
Yeah, and, uh, so I think, that's, that's what I think, I, I would be fine with that, I think on that seven day option for that, or ten day option, either one, but, uh, I think on the others, I think you need the extra time, because, you know, again, you know, I know somebody that's, uh, tested twice, tested negative, and just kept getting sicker and sicker, and, uh, you know, went back to the doctor, and lo and behold, the third time, they, now, he'd, but he'd been sick for almost two weeks to start with.
Right.
And so some of them, some people, the test, they are what they are, you know?
We don't need to take a vote on these certain people being essential, just we just.
You know, I think.
Essentials, I'm not sure I like that.
I think you just need to put in a motion that, that those departments are going to, can be under the guidelines.
And I understand what you're saying, everybody is. And I understand what you're saying. Everybody is essential.
Yeah.
But I think under this pretense here of, of the, being in the COVID situations, we ought to have something, something to, to say, okay, what, what separates this group from this group? And that, just what you said a while ago, is, is, you know, if we've got a situation where, uh, we have a visitor comes in and we've got somebody off, that again, has no symptoms, no nothing, they're going to be in a truck by theirself, basically, and I think it could work for them. So I think that's what we, so I don't know what else you call it.
The word essential is very good, because, because Tammy has essential people.
That's all I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
I think we're just, I think, I'd rather just say, we're going to use the new CDC quarantine guidelines for the highway department, for the depart, other departments we talked about, and, and just leave it at that.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm not sure changing nobody out of the world, they're all essential.
I just know back in March, when we started saying essential, we started getting blistered with people saying, you don't think we're essential?
Yeah, well, you know, but, yeah, everybody is.
If, uh, they weren't essential, we wouldn't employ them, so.
Absolutely.
So, all right, well, uh, then, I guess Mike makes a, a motion, and I'll let you state it if you like. Don't use the word essential.
I'll make a motion to accept the, the new CDC quarantine guidelines, the seven day option, the ten day option, uh, to include the jail, the, the jail, highway department, uh, health department, nine-one-one.
Nine-one-one.
EMS, highway, EMS is already.
There are IT and maintenance.
IT and maintenance, highway, you said that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll say that.
Unanimous.
Um, any other questions before I move into my business stuff?
I think I've talked to you enough.
Yes.
I want to.
I talked to all you guys.
Thank you, because you're always trying to work with people. And I know that's very difficult. I know you catch a lot of flak from public.
Yes.
And I've never seen anything yet that you didn't try to work thing, to work with people, not just.
Right, right.
Sometimes I think, oh, Michelle's doing this and that to me, that's not what I see.
Right, I mean, as you guys know, like, I, my upbringing was someone who ran their own small business.
Yeah.
So, I don't want to ever, you know, put in stipulations or regulations that's going to shut somebody down. Like, to me, like, that hits home, like, that's, you know, that's somebody's family, so, but at the same time, like, if someone is not doing things that are keeping people safe, or just completely disregarding all guidelines, like, they're, you know.
Well, what I've seen is you haven't come in, like, putting the hammer down, saying it's going to be this way, you're saying, here's what we need to be doing, let's work together.
Right, yes.
And when they don't, you still keep working with them.
Well, the other thing, and I know there's a lot of people on Facebook and, you know, that's out here beating people up. People's got to realize that some of these people, uh, are going to lose their business, their livelihood. Because those businesses won't survive this.
Right.
And if they shut down or have to shut down again, uh, you know, we've, I mean, look around the square. I mean, the square used to be, when I was a kid, was, was moving.
Right.
And, um, and some of those small places just won't survive.
Right.
And for somebody to just beat them up on Facebook because they're trying to feed their families, I mean, that's just difficult for me sometimes.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand, but I also understand that these people are trying to make a dime, because when they make a dime, it, it keeps their lights on.
Sure.
Feed their kids, so.
Well, and this is also passed down to you. It ain't like you just woke up one day and said, we're going to do this to everybody.
Right, yes.
You're working the best you can with everybody. I know you are. You're, you're following the state guidelines that sit down to you.
Yes, yes. Um, we do have a local mandate, and really, it's not much different than the state. Um, when the governor rolled out phase one, two, three, four, five, um, the, he put certain capacity percentages and limits. Um, and I think once those went away with stage five, it was really confusing for people, and people kind of took advantage of the fact that there wasn't one listed, even though it said you need to adhere to social distancing guidelines. Um, so the only thing we've done with that local ordinance is just said, um, restaurants need to be at fifty percent capacity, because if you are social distancing six feet, maybe with the exception of one restaurant, you're probably going to be close to fifty percent capacity. So, that's really the only thing that, um, that came out of that local, local mandate from Dr. Rogers, so. Um, but I will say, something that we learned whenever we talked to the state, um, is that the red restrictions are in place for the week you're red, so from now until next Wednesday. And then hopefully, of course, we're going to go down to orange. Um, you have to be in orange for two consecutive weeks, and then with those red restrictions for those two consecutive weeks. And then you can start incorporating those orange precautions and start increasing capacities and things like that. So, just so you guys know that.
Is, is there any other level other than red? I mean, uh.
Red is as bad as it gets.
I mean, and, and I know some states are saying there is. And because I'm looking at this now, we're red, and, and so, okay, this is.
That's as bad as it gets.
And, uh, but the, but the, uh, like, I know it's cut down like twenty-five or less to gatherings now. And, uh, you know, fifty percent for restaurants, that, so, I mean, it's not going to get any worse, I guess, on, on that point than it is. Not unless they just go and say, we shut everything down.
Right, and like I said, we don't have any local conversations like that. Um, even with our schools, like, our, our schools right now have chosen to go virtual, um, because of staffing needs. They don't have no staff. Um, so again, the state says, you know, that, that's a local decision. If, if your schools aren't suffering and they can stay open, like, they can stay open. So we may see that now with these new guidelines, so. Um, we haven't shut anything down that I can think of, um, recently, so.
Okay.
Okay. Um, well, with COVID, I have, um, about to use the life of my printers at the health department, so I need to buy some new ones. Um, they're about, one's eleven years old and one is eight years old, so. Um, I got with M and M Office Supplies, and I got with Teresa, and looked at my budget. Um, and so to replace my two printers that I have in the office now, um, it's going to be five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars with a maintenance contract that covers travel, travel, labor, parts and toner, um, every month for eighty-five dollars for both machines.
That includes the common?
Travel, labor, parts and toner.
Do we have, well, I don't see that here.
No, you don't, sorry. So, since it's a contract, maintenance contract, you guys need to approve that, and then.
So you said you talked, just before you said, I mean, do you have?
Uh, yeah, so I checked.
You have somewhat in your brother's?
Yeah, I'm going to have to move some items around, but, um.
But you have the money?
I have the money, yes, and we got my, um, went through my tax settlement money and all that, looks good, so.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Second. You know.
All right, thank you, guys, and then.
The toner alone. I mean, that's why eighty-five dollars, that's cheap, because that's, that's about one cartridge. Actually, not even some, depending on the printer.
The color ones are much more expensive than that. Um, okay, and then I have some grants that I need you guys to approve that will be starting next, or renewing next year, they're already in effect. Um, so, one of them, um, funds my two HIV case managers at our Austin one-stop shop. So, um, as you know, anyone who is HIV positive, they can qualify for state services, um, called care coordination, which basically allows them to have a case manager that helps them coordinate their care, their appointments, um, any kind of, um, insurance needs, which of course is a big one, um, for our people. Um, so the state has funded those for, this will be, this was the third year, so this will be coming up to be the fourth year. Um, and so this, this grant covers salary and benefits for a total of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, it's reimbursable, no county match, um, so, yeah. Do you want me to do them all individually, or do you want to do it together?
All.
Um, then my other one is for my other two positions at Austin, so that's my HIV tester, my HIV prevention coordinator. Um, they go out to the community, um, obviously, they do testing, um, they help the syringe, syringe exchange program. Um, and they just do a bunch of prevention work. They go to the CR, the recovery center out of Centerstone. They go to the Thrive Recovery Engagement Center here at the church in town, um, do testing, promote rehabilitation, all those services that are in the county. Um, that's a hundred and five thousand. Again, reimbursable, no county match. Um, and then my last one is for five thousand, it's called DEFa, it's through the Indiana AIDS Fund. Um, it provides emergency food assistance for people at our one-stop shop. Um, that's how we are able to give out, like, food pantry items, um, to our HIV clients and those people who are in our Austin office. And that's five thousand, and that's actually in advance, so we get that all just to check, um, to spend that out throughout twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to accept all three grants. I'll say that motion unanimous.
All right, thank you, guys. Um, and I think that's it for me. Like I said, you guys have any other questions that you have for?
I think that question did it attempt.
Uh, it's okay.
I know, it's already made a call last night.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, good, good. Yeah. Like John said, we're trying to work with everybody, so, and no matter, we learn, no matter what you do, like, some people say we're just trying to make everybody sick, and then some people are saying, you know, we're trying to rule the role, rule, rue the, rule the ru, whatever. Rule the world.
There you go.
I'm ready to go home and go to sleep. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
You too.
A deputy prosecutor job description changes.
Good evening. You get me instead of Chris, so I apologize.
We'll, we'll take you over, Chris, I'll say.
All right, thank you. This should be pretty short and sweet. Um, currently, it is just asking you all to, uh, vote to change the job descriptions and job titles for three of the deputy prosecutor positions. Um, one will be changed to be known as criminal and child support deputy prosecuting attorney. That's because the position that Stacy Rensler's currently in, um, so that would be one of the spots. The pay in twenty-twenty-one is already, uh, budgeted for sixty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-six. This used to be known as the second deputy position. Um, and also, the other positions, there will be two of these positions. One used to be this, a second deputy position, and the other one was also, was known as the drug interdiction prosecutor position. Um, the pay in twenty-twenty-one would be sixty-five thousand two hundred and nine dollars for each of those positions. The pay for the old positions, uh, for twenty-twenty-one would have been the drug interdiction prosecutor making sixty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars, and the second deputy making sixty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, not a penny more is going to be spent. What Chris did is, he added those two amounts together and just divided it in half, and that's how he came up with the sixty-five two oh nine. Um, part of the reason for the, uh, Stacy's position making a little bit more, the sixty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-six, is because, um, we can justify that pay raise because of her supervisory duties over the child support division. So not only does she do her criminal load, but she's also, um, the prosecutor who mainly does the child support, all of the child support caseload, and supervising the two staff members over there.
I'll make a motion to accept it, because I, I, I mean, I think Chris called every one of us, so, um, I think it's a good deal, and.
Yeah, you just move the things around.
Yes.
Motion made, second, unanimous.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
That was quick. I liked that, thank you.
And those job descriptions are being sent, they're up there already, and they'll be ready for council to look at.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, this here is the, uh, next up is a grant, grant application request, and this is from the courts, uh, clerk. Uh, and this is a reimbursable, uh, county spends the, then reimbursed, requires a budget. Uh, it's starting at, for a grant period of January twentieth of twenty-twenty, and ends January nineteenth of twenty-twenty-two. An amount requested is fifty-three thousand one hundred dollars. It says county match, no. Uh, again, this is, the county spends it and it has to be, uh, it's re, it's, uh, then reimbursed. And the grant is part of the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program to provide funding to eligible counties to prevent, prepare, uh, for and respond to coronavirus. And, uh, I'm trying to understand this here, to tell you the truth.
Sounds like it'd be due for the court, but that isn't exactly what it's saying.
Well, that's, uh, is that, how, is that money funded? I guess, is that funded back through the portion that we have received?
No, no, this is a totally separate grant.
Okay.
Courts are allowed, they, uh, this has been opened up, I think, maybe through, um, the justice division. And this is money that's been appropriated just for court use only. And so it has nothing to do with our CARES Act money, the seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, this is separate funds.
Okay.
Yes, and there was, um, magistrate, um, Allison Frazier, she's the one that ended up applying for this. And, and those deadlines, you know how they kind of go, and the missy, the next one you see for the clerk. I don't even have my application yet, because she had a deadline. These are just extra coronavirus, small funds that are applying for, due to the nature of their offices.
But I guess my question would be, is, since we pay the bills for the, for the courts, I mean, outside of the salaries for the judges, I mean, uh, would this money come to the general fund of the county, and because they don't have a, they don't have a bank account? So, I mean, technically, if they got this, or received this grant, it would come to the county?
This, this is probably, my assumption is, without knowing, seeing the grant papers, that this is some type of program, um, that they're going to come up with to help prevent, prepare and respond to how the court is going to be. So this is going to cover expenses that they're going to do to better improve their response to the coronavirus, up to the tune of the fifty-three one that they could get awarded.
But again, I mean, uh, if something's going on inside this courthouse that is Corona-related, we're the ones going to set the program, or buy the equipment, or, or anything else, so, I mean, that's where I'm. I mean, I understand, I don't have a problem with applying for a grant, but if they get the grant, I mean, what's the money going to be used for? I mean, or who's going, who's going to allocate the money, and who's going to receive the money, and who's going to allocate it, I mean?
Um, if they are awarded, then there'll be a, there's a budget made for that. And then it will be outlined, and then council will appropriate that, and then the grant fund, there'll be a fund created in our ledger, it'll go negative, and then when we get the check, it reimburses it. That's how, that's how those work.
That's what I'm asking, because they don't have an account, so, I mean, it has to come to.
We create a fund, and their state board of the council allows those to have negatives, and then when we get them, they're awarded, clears it out.
Okay.
I'll make a motion here, so.
Second. Unanimous. Speed up here a little bit. Uh, grant application for the clerk, yes, and this is the CARES Act grant application, and she's asking, uh, grant, uh, for nine, ninety-six hundred dollars, and, uh, this, uh, again, uh, I'm assuming it don't say.
For election officer.
Yeah. It's, yes, it's for, yeah, that's what, we done this back earlier.
I'll make a motion, Chris.
Second. Unanimous. There's nowhere to sign this thing, there's.
You know, you know, that's, I'm going to get an application, and on the, she's your stand, I'll get our stand again, she didn't have that filled out yet.
Yeah, highway department update, bridge inspections.
Um, you've got in front of you the bridge inspection, right here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That comes before you, you've already decided the company, then it goes to the state, then once the state approves it, it comes back to you for your signatures. So it, it asks for all three signatures, and then Tammy has to attest it.
And we've already.
You've already done all the process, and the state's approved the contract.
Signature.
Last year, we got an awful good report back from one.
Um, and while you're reading that, I will tell you, I contacted, um, Katie Adams with NDOT this week to ask if she had heard anything about the community crossing grant. She said, I have heard that it will be next week, most likely, that they announce. She said, I know they were pushing for this week, but something didn't happen. I'm not sure what, if I hear a date, or if they are pushing it back again, I will let you know. So I keep checking in periodically to see about the announcement. I still, they have to do it before the end of the year, so.
Where are we at with the bridge on Main Street?
Um, we're at, we know it costs a lot, a lot of money. And we're at where we know we don't have a lot, a lot of money. Andrew is working to try to see if maybe we could do some different.
Andrew is working to try to see if maybe we could do some different options to really lower that. And when some of this clears up, hopefully he'll present some options to you all, but that's kind of where, it came in a lot higher than what he ever expected.
Well, I figured that.
Yeah.
Even talk with the other engineers, well, actually the bridge engineers that were, that found it, I mean, they were like, this is going to be a, this isn't going to be a cheap one.
Yeah, no, it's.
You need to sign that and then pass it back to Mike, the paper that I gave you.
Kind of.
Yeah, I'm sorry, all three signatures is required on there.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, yeah.
I, I don't know if you were going to bring it up, but we also need to talk about the gates on Boltman Road that were ran over and destroyed again.
Oh, yeah.
We can't afford to keep doing this.
When did they get replaced again? Because when I came in as a commissioner, I'd ask if we could put it back, and if they weren't there, and then all of a sudden.
Boltman's always been there. What was taken down was, or no, that's always been there.
Well, we had to coordinate with Austin too, because one end was Austin, the other end was ours. Because one of them was gone.
Our end, I think.
I laid on, I thought it was the north end that was gone.
I think it was the other end, but the north end's Austin's. They own it and they maintain it. We agree with EMS to alternate months on who goes out and shut it if it's call out.
Who, EMA?
EMS.
Uh, EMA, I'm so sorry.
Say it.
It's okay, Shannon.
I'm a big one in there today.
It's alright. So, I don't know what you want to do, but.
Well, I can tell you on this one, they just, they demolished it, they had to get stuck over there. I heard about it, I got a phone call on it, but. They had to, I don't know how they got out of there.
Then I think prior to this, two weeks ago, someone got stuck.
Oh, there's, there were three people stuck in one day.
And one end was, one, the sheriff's department asked one of our workers to lock it, and, which they shouldn't have done, and Jerry's taking care of that part, but anyway, we got to decide something. Jackson County has an ordinance.
Yeah.
No gate, but they tick it.
Well, it was my understanding, and that's the reason we went to the gates, wasn't it? Because my understanding was, was that the road closed, like, if the road closed sign was, somebody throwed it in the ditch like they have many a times, or under the water, then, probably, one place, yes. Then, then with nothing there, you, they, if the sheriff's department showed up, they couldn't tick it up. But if it's, uh.
We don't have an ordinance either, apparently.
I think you have to have an ordinance.
Yeah.
And you can check with Bob Houston if you want, but.
I think Jackson County even, won't even allow a wrecker to pick them up, unless they notify law enforcement.
That's what's why that's for. What's my word?
I signed that too.
Yeah, it's okay. I think you, you, but it's okay.
Me?
Yeah, but anyway, anyway, we'll.
Don't go pointing fingers.
Guy's leaving, they blame him for it.
Uh, big shoulders, yeah. So what do you want to do?
Well, I, I.
You want me to tell you what I want?
I think we got to pass the ordinance first, so.
Yeah, I want no gates, the signs, and an ordinance to check it.
I would like you to give us a copy of Jackson County ordinance, and maybe get that one, get that done, and you don't want gates, huh?
No.
Oh, I'm not sure I agree with that. As a fireman, and somebody's been butthole deep in water out there, walking through it.
I know two bodies.
I have a hard time saying, don't shut the gates. And, and I don't have a problem putting a chain on it. Because there's plenty of roads in Scott County that somebody can drive around and go the other way if they don't, if they don't want to get out of it. And, and the other part of that is, I'm with John, there needs to be an ordinance, and the person that tears that gate up, or the person that gets caught on the other side of that gate, is going, is get, is going to get a big ticket and a big fine.
I agree.
Because, because it's just not one person going out there and getting those people. And quite honestly, I don't like it when a wrecker service goes out there, because, and I've told them before, you drive your truck out there, and you, you pick up a person that's sitting on top of their car, truck, or whatever, and you come back, and you misjudge where the road is, and you dr, you flip your truck, or your wrecker, or whatever, you just, you're liable now.
Now, Jackson County's ordinance.
They're stuck, they don't have the either, the other gate down, or come back.
Jackson County's ordinance, the wrecker service is not allowed.
Well, they should be.
That's, well, that's why I want their ordinance, because they should be.
But a lot of times, ours will go out there because they got this big old truck.
Right.
And, but like I said, I've, I mean, I've been through splitwater training with boats and everything else, and we do it quite often, and and it's not anything to be playing with, thinking, hey, I got a big four-wheel-drive truck, I'm going to just drive out there and get them, and.
Yeah.
And two people stuck out there now.
Obviously, the position of the gates, you're all, but again, the, a gate's not going to stop them. If, a chain's not going to stop them. If they want through, they're going to get through.
Let me, let me make a suggestion.
Hard place to catch anybody, too.
And I, I think I've made this suggestion before, but we're going to make it again. The gates that you got up there is not going to stop nothing. They're not, they are not going to, they won't, they're, I mean, they're just not going to. What you're going, what we, I think we're going to have to do is do something in more line of a pipe, and I'm talking a heavy schedule pipe, duty pipe, that would fold in both ways and, and lock it in the middle. But them gates that they've got there.
Well, they grow up so it like it was big.
You know, a, a five-hundred-pound steer can run through them and just keep going, if they so choose to.
Well, I know some of your argument, some of your argument about having gates is that, and this is where the argument years ago was, was that, oh, the water recedes, and it's over weekend, and all of a sudden, the gate's still closed. Well, big deal, drive around until it's open, you know?
I think we have a right to close it.
I, I agree with that, as long as you stick with that.
I, I, I mean.
But there you go back to Facebook, and you know, you try to get through, but, you know.
You can give my phone number, I mean, because. Those people that are complaining aren't the people out there in the middle of the night, or in the cold, and whatever, getting somebody off a car. Or worse, I mean, I've had worse. I mean, uh, so, you know, you can think you're going to drive through it, until you're not driving through it, so.
So.
In January, you don't get out.
So do you want me to give the, I'll get the ordinance, and then look into the kind of gate, the price on the kind of gate he's talking about?
What, what would be, and I know you're talking about a gate, but, and I know it's probably a little bit more warf, maybe, but what about some of those concrete barriers? You know, that they use to split roads out here on the construction site? What if we set two of those at each end of tho, those areas, and say, okay, we're going to close this road, we send a, a, whatever, a piece of equipment out there to, to pick them up and set them in the roadway, and say, you're not going through here?
This is the problem on the north.
And I did notice we had warning signs before they ever got there, too.
Oh, we have, don't, I mean, we have all the.
I know, but I mean, for liability reasons, they.
Yeah, we had to get it, we go, this is the problem on the north end. The concrete, they went around it, so it wouldn't matter. Because that's where Texas property is there, and.
It just hopefully.
On our end, they'd be in the ditch.
By the way, Austin needs to have an ordinance too.
Yeah, they would have to.
Well, I mean, I, I can tell you right now, the fire department's for it, so. I'll get called off on.
But I mean, they need the ordinance up there.
Yes.
It's just not.
I don't think that's going to be a problem, though. But I, but as far as the liability part, if that road's shut down, it's shut down. If, if it's, if it's construction, it's shut down, it's shut down. I mean, if they don't want to, if they don't like it, they can go back up and get on the interstate and drive the other way.
But they can't do terror property up there.
Well, it's way out.
Yeah, and I think that's created a criminal act when they do that, so, without an ordinance even. But let's do the ordinance, so.
I'll have it for next meeting. You got anything for me?
Uh, you'll be in contact with Austin, too?
Yeah.
So they can maybe get, see if they're in the same line on as we are.
Yeah, I don't know how often they meet, but.
Next to the night.
Okay.
And when we say that, we're talking, there's two or three places, not just one. We're talking on the Jack Morgan.
They're stopped there.
I know, but I mean, the ordinance would be the same, and.
Yeah.
Last one went out there, it was a FedEx driver.
Yeah, they don't, they don't damage that as bad as they do Boltman.
He goes, well, I thought it was alright. And there's always going to be a place cropped up and heavy flooding, you can't do everything.
Right, right.
But those are the two worst spots I know of. Well, the bad thing about it on Croweville Road is that ditch is so deep.
Right.
If you go in there, you're, you're in trouble.
That's coming from UPS, man. When I, when I, when I worked for Coke, it'd been the Pepsi Man, dude.
The tomb station there. Hard to back in things up.
Should I have one of them go to the council meeting about the community crossing that they passed with the Tuesday? Do you want to do that?
Tuesday?
Yeah.
What, nine o'clock?
I don't know when I'm on yet. But I don't know what time.
But we can let you know, nine thirty, something like that.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Thank you.
But, just in case, I'm certain you'll remind me, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hundred dollar bill now.
Asking for a friend. I'm, I'm asking for a friend.
Really, there's two in mine, oh.
Uh, it's the contract for Blue and Company, for tax returns. And this is, again, for the Economic Development Corporation that we basically turned this over to, not having a director, and, and this is to do the returns on that, and that is in the amount, the contract here is. We're having a dollar figure down here. No, no, this is just a.
Something was there not to exceed fifty thousand per, or during the year, and not, no, it's an act.
Yeah.
That's basically what their fee is to do about one year within the town.
I don't, I don't see a fee on here of what this, uh.
It's two thousand dollars. I don't see it on there either, but. Looks on page five, it says administrative fees in other terms, but there is no fee. Maybe it's on there.
Oh, it will not exceed, our charges for services at regular rates will not exceed two thousand.
What page do you own?
Six, actually, six of eight.
Yes, okay, alright.
And this is doing the book for.
The EDC.
The EDC has the nonprofit status, their filing is a really hard one to get, and so they're not going to let that go default for a while, because in case it were picked back up, they don't want to have to go through all that paperwork again, so they're going to actually refile the papers with the federal government for this. And this is for their tax returns, because they have to file a certain way, and that's not for the county. We don't file tax returns, so this, they have a fund here at the county, and this will be paid from that fund.
And there was a couple years later, thankfully, we didn't necessarily do anything.
That's correct, there was no need for audits.
Just wouldn't need to, so. I'll make a motion.
I second. Unanimous.
They want Tammy to do it, and I told them she wasn't doing anything, she could probably do it by herself. Pass that to her, let's just sign.
I don't need to sign nothing.
No.
Nobody wants me to sign anything. Uh, and then we got the, uh, this is a memorandum, memorandum of understanding, and this is between Bobby Foster and the Scott County Economic Development Corporation. And they have agreed, I guess he's running the robotics, is that what it is, the robotics? This is an invoice for ten thousand, eight hundred dollars. And it's basically to the Scott County Development Corp, Economic Development Corporation. And that's for the MOU and what they had set up, and that's a Maverick Challenge, and this is for the 2020 school year.
And it was that twenty thousand that Chuck Riddus came and talked about? And if you can see the other fees, they're going to be under budget of what they estimated it might cost at this point. And the redevelopment fund is, is the one that this is going to be paid from. So it's, it's just basically agreement and for Bobby for that.
The money go already there.
The money is there, it's just.
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Unanimous.
And then so next meeting, I'll bring the invoices associated with this to the panel.
There you go, John, pass that one, you, you're the pastor here. I'm, I'm a pastor?
Your pastor.
A pastor?
Uh, twenty twenty.
That'll be today.
Uh, and also, we got a claims, uh, well, let's go to the nine-one-one EMA update. Anything on that that we need to know?
I was just going to pass on some information to you.
Okay.
When Jill sees out, I'll get that out of the way. Several weeks ago, she put me in contact with NDOT, and I'm happy to report, last Wednesday, they called, and we can probably answer this better than I can, but they put in a work order. Slab and fifty-six is getting a flashing LED stop sign. They'll go air warning. Work order's already in place, so it should be, what, a couple weeks?
Is that something we'll put on our property, or the state's put on our property?
The state.
Okay.
And long-term plan is, they, their engineers agreed with my thoughts. And eastbound fifty-six, at long-term plan, we're going to put in a turn lane onto a slab road.
Yeah.
Now.
Let's go back.
Yeah, let's back up to the, let's back up to the flashing stop sign is for slab road coming on, they're not putting a stop sign on fifty-six, correct?
He's had several ramps.
Stop sign's going to be on slab.
Yes, okay.
It's going to be a flashing LED.
Good, good.
Extra warning that, that T-intersection is there, and they're putting up double, I don't know what she meant, double arrow warning signs on slab, as an extra thing.
I, I am hesitant to say this, but there has been so many people, and it happens mainly in the fog, that shoot straight over fifty-six, that would it behoove us to put rumble strips in prior to that? And I'm not talking about this big speed bump, but a, a rumble strip to where, because, you know, a guy, I, I know a guy, I just talked to him, matter of fact, yesterday, and he went completely over that, and got banged up pretty good, and I seen him and was talking to him, and he said, I thought I was at, he said, I'll be honest, he said, I, I thought I was at, uh.
Back away from grain bin.
Grain bin.
We, we talked about that.
And I wondered, but, and he said, by the time I realized it, he said it was too late, and, and he shot completely over it. And I, I just, I don't know whether it would not be on that one side, as you're coming up there, to maybe have rumble strips, uh.
Our problem now, right now for that, is the design of that road going uphill in our plow.
Yeah.
So we, we talked about that, and, I mean, hopefully, give us a season to see how this light does, but we did talk about it, but.
I think the rumble strips would be good twenty-five yards, or thirty, forty yards back, you know?
Yeah, it'd have to be back where, once, you know, once they got used to that, oh, I'm not, I'm, you know, on the phone, and, and again, I, I, you know, I hate to say it, but, you know.
I thought Charles' phone numbers, you know, they like the rumble.
Mine's not going to be very important, it's just a few. You know, you can pass it my way, but it ain't going to be very important, I'm going to tell you that.
Like, people clean over rumble strips? I'd say it, I'd say the.
Oh, yeah. They fly, slab road.
A dozen or, two dozen people over the years that ended up out there, and that, and actually, three and fifty-six out there, it's costing a lot, they finally put a ramp at the other end of it, so that if you go past.
So that if you go past, you go over, at least you're gonna ramp out in the field.
Yeah.
These guys here, that's so deep. If you go out there, you're gonna, you're gonna flip and you'll be on your top, so...
That was one of my main things, coming from the dispatch side and how many accidents we had there. I talked to Jill. She put me in contact with Greg Prince. Shot him an email and they sent out the engineers and they was like, yeah, there's been a lot of accidents here. So that's their solution. Long-term, they're planning on putting in a turn lane for what eastbound.
That's, that's kind of amazing to me. That's kind of amazing to me that you had to shoot an email out and they realized that there's been a lot of accidents there.
The thing about the turn lane there is at the time of that turn lanes put in there, that might be a good opportunity to, you know, they'll have to put a culvert or a ditch or something there. I mean, that they could maybe...
I don't know how the turn lane's gonna turn out. I mean, I can see both sides. I could see it maybe causing accidents.
I don't know how many times people just...
The lights gonna help a lot.
Yeah, even the fog will be some more.
At turn lane, their engineer thinks that it's necessary, but I can see the other side that, uh, hopefully it won't cause more accidents.
Yeah.
But, uh...
Okay.
That, and me and Mike's been talking about the Nixle. I kinda wanna see how you guys feel about getting with Tammy and doing a, maybe just department heads. That way, if you guys have information which you wanna get out to department heads, I can set her up or she can let me know and I can send it out.
What, what, what took, what, what happened on that? We had that before.
Yeah, it's been there twenty years.
I mean, we had it, um, back years ago and, and, uh, you know, uh, was receiving it, but, but for some reason it's gone away and do, do you have any idea on that?
I suspect some people just use it better than others do. And the ones that didn't use it just went to the waste. Well, I just know that this, knowing that the school systems use it to alert parents for all sorts of stuff, that if we have that capability, then we need to be using it as well.
I, I, I agree.
It's free. Well, not really. It's free for the users.
Yeah.
We pay for it.
We're used to the same thing.
I want us, we, it comes out of my budget.
Okay.
But I've got now, in twenty years I've been there, now I've got eight, at least eight of my dispatchers set up and trained on how to use it, which we never did before. Uh, now if we have another instance like Thomas Plastics, I'll have people in there who can send out those messages to alert the public. But I just need to know if...
Well, I'm, I, I like what you said.
If we wanna do a, a county, a county group, department heads, that way if, if you guys, you know, we get a big snowstorm and you need to shut the courthouse down, then we can send it out to department heads and they can contact their...
I wanna, I, I eventually wanted to see because of tornadoes and emergency storm, you know, storms and stuff like that to where anybody wants to, John Q. Public that wants to be alerted that there's a tornado, that he'll get a message on his cell phone or on his phone so that at least he knows, hey, there's a, there's a warning out here.
Right now, we've got, I think, fifty-three hundred and some people signed up on it.
So how do you sign up?
You can either text, uh, your zip code to that.
How do they know that thing? What you mean? Is that what your, how do these people know they can sign up? When you send something out?
Yeah, I put it on our Facebook page and I'm gonna do it again. I'm gonna work with the radio station.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is, you know, 'cause I'm glad, I mean, because like you said, uh, if the schools, if it's simple enough, the schools can do it and, and, and work people off. Simple messages that I think we ought to be doing it too, if we have the capability.
Contact Marcus with the paper and see if he can run an ad or an article in the paper about it.
We can get a link on the county website. On our county website, we can get it.
It's already on there.
It's on the website?
The Nixle widget's on, already on the county website for people to sign up.
Under you guys.
I think you have to go under the EMA nine one one page and it's at the very bottom.
Maybe we should spread it out a little bit more over our page, even if it's...
I've got print material. I can hang up in the courthouse. The bulletin boards, whatever. Take them out, like J.C.E., Walmart, on their boards. We gotta push that, get the information out there. So... Other than that, uh, just give you a little rundown last month. The dispatch took nine hundred and twenty-nine nine one calls, twenty-six hundred and eighty-three administrative calls. Year-to-date, as of yesterday, all call types were at fifty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-four calls. As of yesterday morning, when I ran the report.
How's that stand with the prior year? About the same?
Yeah, it's looking about the same from last year.
Okay.
But, uh, the, uh, other thing on the agenda was that, uh, bill.
Oh, the invoice.
Oh, yeah.
That is for a, uh, Mavic two Enterprise Dual Center Drone. It already, it was delivered last week. It is a drone with four K video, still camera and FLIR technology. A lot of law enforcement, EMA agencies are using those. We had the money in the EMA and L E P C budget.
Who's gonna train to do it?
I'm gonna fly it.
You're gonna do it.
I've got a personal drone at home.
Yeah, but I know there are certain things you have to have a license for.
Yeah. If you plan to use it as a business for, to make money, you have to have a pilot's license.
Okay.
Which I don't think we necessarily have to do that, but, uh, I'm gonna make it available to all law enforcement, EMS, fire. Cause it does have the FLIR. We can use it for all, all kinds of stuff. Damage assessment, free planning, search and rescues. Uh, county highway needs to get out and look at something, the log jams that you guys talk about. We can take it up and check out those. Keep an eye on that stuff. Uh, building, building, uh, if you need to go out and inspect something, we can do that. We can check out uh, the roof of the courthouse without sending anybody up. So a lot of good uses for it.
All right, uh, here.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question to you. I see two pages. One page is twenty-one sixty-eight and the other one is...
Yeah, Teresa's.
What's the difference?
Two different funds. We're splitting the bill.
Two different funds together to pay for it. Okay, all right, I got you. Yeah, I'm, I'm, what do you wanna?
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say. There's, there will be, uh, operating procedures for it. And there will be, uh, follow law, state, federal laws, and that privacy and stuff.
All right.
Well, as a, as a Scottsburg fireman, I wanna thank Ian, well, first of all, I wanna thank nine, or nine one one for, um, the day of the, uh, Thomas fire that, um, you know, I'm usually your biggest critic, but, uh, and I, I will say after a while, I wasn't listening to anything, but I, I, I do know that there was a lot of radio traffic that day and, and the reason I'm coughing is still because of that fire, but, but, um, uh, everything to my knowledge ran as smooth as it could possibly think of that day, but, uh, uh, and also the second thing is on the EMA side of, of assisting people evacuating because, um, you know, quite honestly, that, that half the town was blacked out. I mean, uh, and I was lucky enough to be on the other side of the, of the...
It was a learning experience, some people.
I'm amazed we didn't lose a bunch of houses on Elm Street. So they, you're right, they were on top of that.
I mean, I can say that that seemed to me was perfect because the way Jim Ritchie did the command, all, well, there was nine depart, fire departments there, everybody went through one, one person. And it worked flawlessly. And then law enforcement, EMS, Washington County EMS, had a crew over here that helped it out. It was...
It was, have we ever had bigger fires? That's a bigger...
Oh, I can remember having bigger fires.
Oh, I swear.
Oh, that's huge.
Feed mail.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's here.
This, of course, there's a difference, cause a lot of people think there was an explosion. There was a fire, then there was an explosion. So it wasn't like something blew up that started the fire. There was a fire that started the explosion, so...
Of course, Morgans at Austin, you know, Pearland County.
The other thing, yeah. Something else that we didn't have, like I said, I've been here for twenty years. I may have gave you two, that one. But in my twenty years, I've never seen this. And when I took the position, I reached out. And that is everything the state of Indiana requires EMA to be notified and were responding to. And I've been through three or four EMA directors and I've never seen that.
He's talking about the whole thing here or what you, I mean?
Yeah, it's a pretty extensive list of...
Okay.
I mean, everything from fuel spills to weather to school shootings, terrorist activity. That's what the state requires the EMA director to respond to. That's just for...
This isn't something we have to do. This is just how it is, right?
Yes. That's the state minimum, what they expect each county EMA director to respond to.
Yeah.
All right, well...
All right.
So your people, uh, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Good job.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, we got a twenty twenty tax sale resolution certificate assignments for the city of Austin and the city of Scottsburg, it says. I know that we did this for the city of Scott, Austin and that...
Just follow up to the, to the Austin decision, but you have two things for Scottsburg that I, one is, there's a little lack of Scottsburg resolution. But Austin, this is just your completing document to decide that you've resolved to turn those eight tax sale assignments. You've already made the motion. Really, you just need to sign this, pass the resolution and sign this.
So all we need is a signature.
And this motion to, as well, cause I've got a number with this one. We didn't have it at the last meeting, this type of certificates.
I'll make a motion to accept it since I think we already did.
Yeah.
I'll sign it.
And the sign up back there. And this one here is, uh, is a resolution assigning the twenty twenty tax sale certificate to the city of Scottsburg. Did we do it the other day?
No, we did not.
And this is for one, uh, one seventy-five North Park Drive in Scottsburg, eight seventy-one street and one eighty East Madison Street.
Are these abandoned properties?
Those are properties that, uh, did not sell, sell and the county holds its lease certificate on. And so they have shortened redemption period. They go to another taxing unit. And a lot of times the cities wanted to clean them up and so they'll have, still, they'll have a redemption period. They can end up back in the owner's hands if they come and pay the taxes up. But if they don't, then the city of Scottsburg approached the, the courts for an order to be given the property. And then all the taxes and every, all, all the lands will be removed at that point and we'll start all over.
It's the same thing Austin. We did it Austin. I'll make a motion.
Second. Now, we talked about this a little while back. What about the, we talked about Tammy about a possible, so many properties can't get rid of having a commissioner's certificate, is that correct, word? Where you get rid of them, so you can just move them.
We have forty-two properties on tax sale and there were just like twelve over sold or something. So we had a lot of properties left over. Um, cause sometimes they end up being a little bit stripped or something or whatnot. Um, after we get these assigned to Austin and Scottsburg, we can, um, kinda take a look at the list and we might wanna see if there's anything worth trying to hold this thing on. Um, not for sure, but sometimes these end up being roads that really, the land...
An alleyway or something.
If we sell them, at least they're on the patroliers. And the way it is now, we're just sitting there letting property go bad.
Well, it, it needs, that some things need to be just divided and split to the owners who are enjoying it.
Oh, okay. Whatever we do, helps move these things along.
Yeah, it does. And, um, there are some things that just sit there, I mean, year after year after year and don't show anywhere. So those are the ones we need to look at.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up is renewal for Live Spring Mental Health Services for, uh, uh, contract for the jail. This is something that we do every year. Uh, have been, uh, so, uh...
I'll make a motion. I think it's the same...
Same thing.
Same price so far.
Second.
Unanimous.
Yeah, there was no, no changes.
Moving right along.
We're moving, yes. Uh, consideration of the November monthly claims, uh...
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Unanimous. John, you're not gonna need to sign this and pass it to her.
All right. Uh, and also, uh, next is a ratification for the November twenty twenty, uh, payroll. Next is the white bill. That's for Tammy.
Second, whichever.
Sorry.
John makes a motion. Mike second. I'll make it unanimous. And, uh, consideration of the minutes, uh, for, uh, October twenty-first, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Unanimous. EMS update.
Where's that timer at?
No, 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 Mike. I'm just gonna say yes. I'm getting on with it. We're on the rolls. It's not bogged down. I'll make a click. All right, so...
No.
No, that's not how this works. All right, so the first thing, uh, we got a, a deposit of a hundred and nine thousand, um, for November. October, I believe it was ninety thousand and September it was a hundred and twenty thousand. So we are still increasing from what we were. We should be at a hundred and twenty thousand a month. Uh, ninety percent of the time we do have the third truck on. We are answering calls the way we need to be doing. We are still by calling from Clark. We do have a, a process going on that has happened with the COVID problem and all that kind of stuff. Just let you guys know. Uh, no contamination issues at this point. Everybody's, uh, masking goggles, so we don't have any issues with that. Um, the equipment's coming in, so we do have monitors coming in that were appropriated through the, uh, CARES Act. So we do have that step coming in within the next two weeks. Um, we do have the stretcher in for the new truck. So I wanna get the insurance and license plates for that truck. We'll have it on the road. Um, so last meeting you said it was all right for me to go ahead and start looking at purchasing trucks. Um, I've done that. I do have some funding. I have found some stuff, so just to let you know what's going on. Uh, I do ask that, I do have a couple trucks found, um, to speed the process up. You gave me the permission last week. I just need to know and make sure that you guys are okay with that. Um, I know you guys got a sign for it, so just let me know. I do have an offer on one of the trucks to trade in for a new ambulance. They're gonna give us twenty thousand for one of the trucks. Um, it will be traded in and then I can drive it up and I'll drive a new one back. So we don't have no downtime on that truck. Everything will be ready to go when we pick the truck up, except for the lettering on the side. Now, it's a hundred fifty-four thousand. They're gonna give us twenty thousand for the truck, so a hundred thirty-some thousand. Bob's got the...
So is this a, is this a truck that we can swap the bed or the box?
No, Jill's gonna get the one that we can do that with. Uh, basically why I'm trying to get this truck is because we're gonna be spending twenty thousand every quarter to keep it on the road. Same way with the one that Jill's gonna get, but they're not gonna be using it every day like what we're using it for. Um, basically, whenever we fix one leak, six, seven, we got five more that comes back up. And I'm tired of sitting in the garage, cause we need trucks. So the solution is, is get different trucks. I do have a meeting next month with redevelopment and the, um, county council for the appropriation of the funds, so just looking to guys know. They rehab on services attached to disease trucks, it's scrambling for whatever the guilty kids they all know, what we're probably gonna be going through, a shutdown. And I just need to make sure you guys.
How many, how many miles on that truck you know?
The truck that we're gonna replace there has got around a hundred-and-forty-five thousand. Like this is, and that's why I was trying to get ahold of you the other day, I had some questions on some other options and you can call me back, that's okay, that's okay.
Where's this dealership at, I'm just curious.
We've bought those before, those are in our car, crossroads is where we bought those trucks from, so that's where this truck, particular truck's coming from. They're also gonna remount a truck for us, that truck's gonna cost us right at a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, um, give or take. So we're gonna send another truck up in December or January to have it remounted and along through the process with the council to get that money as well.
I remember, right, you called me and then I called you back and then after that, that fire.
Right.
That fire happened, so.
Yeah.
I tried to call you back.
Just saying, I text you too.
Shane's gonna be coming on Monday, we're having a redevelopment meeting Monday.
So here, here's the plan, uh, with Tammy, we're filing the, um, COVID FEMA grants. Um, basically it's about eight-hundred, nine-hundred thousand dollars, the county's app lay would be about two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand of that, so we're under what we need to be. We have the other funds, I'm hoping we can utilize, um, with some truck purchases in there. We're gonna be underneath the CARES Act money, um, if, if council's willing to work with us on that, so we do have the money in place. Um, also redevelopment's been working with us on some money, and I have some questions for them. So on Monday we'll have redevelopment, Tuesday we're going to the council, I've got the numbers, I've haven't gone over five times to making sure that they are accurate. I think I was off by like fifty cents.
Didn't you say you were doing something with FEMA too?
Yes, sir, so here's how, we're looking at FEMA, we're looking at COVID money reimbursements for seventy-five percent. Is that eight-hundred some thousand dollars and I do have that and it will be in your guys' emails, if you wanna see those numbers to the penny. I can account for what redevelopment's already given us, they give us fifty-three thousand, I can account for every dime of that. Some of it's been spent, some of it's not been spent, but I can account for every dime we're sitting at, what's going on with it, so. Um, I can account for every dime that we're gonna be getting from, if we get some from redevelopment, I've already got that. And the council, I've got that already figured, positive news for us, um, I've contacted the hospital, I've talked to Gene. Also Russell Comer, um, has been brought in to see as a board member of what the hospital can do for us for pitching in to buy us a truck, uh, and equipment. Because a lot of our stuff going up and down that highway, beat your trucks to death, so I have included them on this. Um, FEMA COVID monies, also we're in January eligible for a one-point-five million dollar grant based on our population, we are fine, signing for that. We are filing it, we are gonna make that happen, so we're gonna get our stick of the pie based on our population base for emergency services. Also, the, um, CARES Act has been reestablished, or is in the process of being reestablished in twenty-one. So until December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-one, we'll be able to get CARES Act, which should enable us to get our, um, labor back like we did this last time. I don't know what the dates are because I'm not released, but that's what we're gonna do to get our sales back up out of the hole that we were in. Reason, only reason why I'm here for trucks is basically because everything's wore out and we're spending a ton of money on repairs. So I went to the extreme of looking at medium duty trucks, cause I was looking at some Kenworth T-three-hundreds, um, just for the interstate drought, so we can get back and forth to work. Million mile, I think you drove a truck, million mile, pack car engines, Allison transmissions, I mean, I found some pretty good deals, but they'd already been sold, so. Um, I'm looking at different avenues for transportation. Volume, we've been running twenty-eight to thirty-five runs a day on those three trucks and if you can contest. Um, last night, knock on wood, I think we were down to about fourteen, but that's a fluke, I'm gonna tell you right now. There's a lot of times, we can, we, I can tell you right now, there's some days we need four to five trucks on the road and we, we just don't have it. We do call in mutual aid, so we are utilizing that as well.
Come on, I suppose. Where are you going, what do you see in the coming future you're gonna need from us? And the council, anything else?
As long as I can get, we get the COVID money, the grants coming in, we're gonna be good. Uh, you know, like I said, you gotta said you did one on the tax base, you wanted it brought out from where it was to where it needs to be. So we're making that go, we're making it not being on the tax roll. Um, we're gonna try to utilize some of this grant money for payroll if possible, so that way we can stay where we need to be, build up our funds and then repay. Um, or put back into your rainy day fund for, for council, so that's what we're staying at.
You know, and to hear you say what you just said, I, I do not know, uh, again, if people of Scott County realize what we do have when it comes to the EMS service. Uh, you know, sixteen years ago, uh, when I come on board here, we created this ambulance service, uh, our own service. We had, uh, it's costing us, I think, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year to contract with a, uh, service that many times we didn't even have an ambulance in the county. And we have three and like you're saying, uh, sometimes you need four to five. And so the service has got so much better, uh, you know, and I know there's people still wanna beat you up or whatever at certain times, but the service has, we have came so far with this that it's, uh.
When I managed this for Scottsburg, cause I was the one that come up here with Scottsburg, when I managed it, I had five trucks on the run and I kept all five trucks busy in this county. And that was back in two thousand, two thousand-two, two thousand-three is when I left.
Back in old days, you didn't have a lot, who, who you gonna complain to, it's kinda.
Oh, yeah.
Who you gonna complain to?
I can tell you from my personal knowledge that we can, we have the base to do those runs. Uh, we are looking at some other things to do, contract with some flight services, since we're in between two, I've done talk to one of those. They're very interested in us and having this MICU unit, that way we can haul out of, uh, K D H if that's what they so deemed desire. Also out of Seymour and Scott County or Scott Memorial, so we can look at three different places. Um, I've got people wanting to work here now, um, I've got people who want to broaden their education because we're looking at doing a critical care medic program. I've got thirty-five to forty people already lined up for that class because the closest place is two-hundred-and-fifty miles away to have that. And that's in the national accreditation, but we can also put flight medics through with the instructional staff that we would have to do that. So we're broadening, broadening our, um, financial base, you know, I, I think it's gonna be over one-point-six. We're, we're shooting for one-six, I think it's gonna be higher than that, to be quite honest with you.
And I, I'm gonna say this and, and let it go at this, but I, again, uh, things change and, uh, you know, new people come on board and I will say this to the two of you that's gonna be back here, uh, I implore what you do, you know, whatever it takes to keep this going, keep it going, and I think you guys who are in groups of that, uh, to never give up on that EMS service out there. If you have to put it on the tax roll, so be it, but, you know, uh, which, which I think with you in place, I don't see that happening. You've done a wonderful job without keeping us off of there and, uh, but for the county, uh, it is, uh, non-negotiable to me that we would ever go back.
So I hope on the last meeting here, I'll have all the numbers from the year, I know we're running about thirty-nine hundred runs, so I know our run volume's picking up. We're getting more and more patients that are three to five, um, possibilities of having COVID. So we're doing a little bit of extra things on the scene to protect ourselves, um, we're looking at different equipment for the trucks to help keep the trucks sanitized and all that kind of stuff. And I didn't name the strike, uh, strike, I nervous last meeting with the autopsy and, uh, torn trauma. But there, there's some other things that we're gonna have to look at too in the future, and I'm not trying to get on any particular person, but there's just some things we gotta look at because of CDC regulations and stuff, um, to be honest with you, so you guys have all seen it. The reason why I'm getting on to these trucks, I'll get back to it, first count first, sir, we gotta get the trucks, we gotta get them here because we're gonna have some issues, so. Equipment wise, we're staying pretty good. You guys have one thing in front of you, um, originally that was in our application packet, uh, a previous administration took that out. That allows that our employees to put down what kind of medical history they have, what kind of medications and who the prescriber is. I went through and rewrote this, uh, because we need to use that for pre-employment and employment so we can check if anybody has an abusive situation to the prescribed medications. Because there are people that do abuse prescribed medications and also it just takes in there about, what it, it describes what, um, prescribed medications are. It also goes through, it describes illicit, non-prescribed medications.
Yes.
So we're not trying to break anybody's personal information, that's gonna be locked down, but we have got to know what they're on, what they're taking for.
Got a question about that is, uh, and I guess I should know this answer though. Does a EMS personnel have to have a CDL?
No, and the reason why is because it's not mandated yet, however, sort of like with the fire department, you're not mandated. However, I think it states in there somewhere about when you go on the initial call, it's an emergency, but when you're hauling water on the way back to the fire station, technically you should have a CDL because you're not loaded with water.
Well, and the reason I ask is just kinda like what you're saying here.
However.
Drug testing.
Correct, we need to be able to test our people, whatever we need to, because if they're taking too much Ambien or they're taking too many muscle relaxers or they're taking somebody else's pain medication or they're abusing their pain medication, we have got to take the sample.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why, that's why I put that in there specifically, because there are providers that do abuse medications and we have got to keep, keep that stuff.
Well, also.
Absolutely. I mean, that's a safety issue for us.
Like a CDL driver, you know, you can't take certain type of medication and drive a vehicle.
Right, and that's like.
Yeah, you don't have to drive it, you just can't do it.
It's like driving a semi truck and you having seizures and you having epilepsy and you having diabetic reactions. So there's a lot of things that we gotta look at and that's what that covers because it kind of is based off the DOT curriculum of what you guys have to follow for over the road drivers, so.
It don't matter if it's a legal road or not, it's not the issue, it's whether it's safe to be behind a vehicle.
It isn't within its normal limits of you taking, because we did have a person, and I have two employees that take Araberol. And they come back positive for amphetamines, that is the main ingredient in that medication, well, they're not spaced out. They just take it for ADD issues. So just to let you guys know, she tested fine, she tested positive, she knew she would, uh, but that wasn't in there at that point. Now that's in there, every employee gets hired and everybody that's employed there will be filling one of these out, and we will have that on the bottom.
All right. Thank you.
Just on side, it appears to me like you and Jeff are working real close together.
Yes, sir.
And Jill. Working with all the emergency, well, I mean, all.
Yes, sir.
That's why I'm seeing it seem like.
I, I've met with Lexington and we've talked about that, I met with Johnson on.
Yeah.
Um.
You both been to Vienna last night.
Yeah, I forgot.
I want you there.
I know, right, I actually was gonna be on the truck and went home, I sat down by the platter and fell asleep.
They said you get back with it.
Yeah, and I did, and I've talked to Wayne before and he knows what our plan is because I've talked to Dwayne on Monday night. Uh, the plan is, is in Scottsburg, James and I have talked, we're gonna be supplying them with their oxygen tanks from now on because it's just cheaper. We're getting rid of our cascade system because it's just not, it's not installed properly. So we're, we're gonna do away with that, it's cheaper for us to have it, it costs me twenty-eight cents a day for the tanks and it includes.
Start oxygen.
Yeah.
Pure oxygen.
Pure oxygen, yeah.
Well, I, I.
No, I know, and I, and I know.
If we have any problems, we get them.
And I talked to Austin, you know, they're still not wanting, they're, they have a personnel issue right now. Uh, we're working with them to get recruitment up for all the fire departments in the county, we're offering the first responder classes, EMT classes. Um, we're trying to do standard now, their people up so they can get some more recruitment going on, give us some more recruitment going on so we can use people inside the county, I mean, that's the only ticket we're gonna have, we're trying to give them the, um, biggest benefit of all. So every department, including Scottsburg, have been brought to the table and we all know what we're doing. So I call everybody, Jill's gonna be getting one of our trucks, they're gonna use that as a service vehicle, just as soon as I can get a replacement in and she knows that, she's, she wants the truck, so. It'll be F-four on the drive, F-four fifty, so they'll be utilizing it, so.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Perfect what you did.
All right, uh, anything on your part, anything on your part? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Begging.
Unanimous, we're out of here, thank you.
We're doing better.
You can kick that off, all right.